For the Springboro Board of Education meeting on Thursday, May 8th, 2014. We have called a board, or roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Mr. President? Ragano?
Here.
Stuckey?
Here.
I'll lead us in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Malone?
Second.
Should he second in the discussion?
Yes, Mr. Anderson. On item 4.1, would like to have those voted on separately. All these different policies for second reading.
Oh, we want all the different policies to be voted on separately?
Yes.
Any other changes? Okay. Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 1.3, approval of the April 24th, 2014 meeting minutes. And a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Grando and second. Dr. Malone, second. Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 2.1, Springboro Education Association report. Any such reports? Item 2.2, Springboro Classified Employees Association report. Is there any report? And item 2.3, public participation pre-range. I don't believe anybody has requested to speak. No.
That'll be the next one. Public participation.
We'll get you on the next one. And then public, 2.4, public participation. Anybody would like to speak? If you just recite your name, will you come up, did you come up to the podium, sir? And then recite your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Chris Hobbs, 35, Brookwood Court, Springboro High, 45 years. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to share my comments. My comments tonight are direct reference to Section 6 on your agenda, under the Business Manager's Report, specifically 6.1, 6.2, Digital Copiers Proposal, section of the agenda. Again, my name is Chris Hobbs, and I represent Rico USA. I'm here to protest against the board entering into an agreement with Millennium Business Systems to supply copiers for the district and service maintenance said sharp copiers for a term of 60 months, commencing on July 1st, 2014. First and foremost, I'm a taxpayer in the school district. In addition to that, I'm a sales manager with Rico USA, who is your current provider of digital copiers, service and support for the district. And again, I'm requesting the board to vote no on the recommendation to select a new vendor under Section 6.1, 6.2. My request is based on the following information. Rico USA supports the best possible scores in four out of six categories: price, company assuredness, deployment of comparable scope, and proper completion of the RFQ. Rico USA provided the lowest bid. The contracts provided by Millennium Business Systems and the file attachments on the agenda show a total base cost of $11,047 per month, which is $7,027 for the lease and $4,020 for the service, which includes 1.1 million black and white images per month and $20,000 images per month. Rico's pricing, based on that same criteria, equates to $8,285 per month, or $2,761 per month lower. This equates to about $165,718 of the terms contract. The $8,285 also includes the upgrade of existing contracts and the shipping back of any of the copiers as well. There were two scores that lowered Rico USA's overall rating to 92. Rico was scored a 16 in service capabilities and a 16 in reliability. We requested last week to email the vendors and what factors were used that scored us a 16 versus a 15, or 17, 18, 19, or 20, and that's how the scale was. And the response we actually received this morning is that there had not been a proactive approach to service, and large Rico devices jammed more than the other devices. So I wanted to provide some data directly, in my opinion, that relates to our service performance and the equipment. Rico's total uptime percentage was 98.4 percent from April 1st, 2013, to March 31st, 2014. This percent exceeds our current contractual obligations and also exceeds the requested uptime percent of 97 percent in the current RFQ. Rico's average response time was 2.9 hours from April 1st, 2013, to March 31st, 2014. The 2.9 hour average response time exceeds our current contractual obligations and also exceeds the requested average response time of four hours in the current RFQ. Regarding the equipment and the jams, Jeff Hudson, the major county that covers Springboro School Districts, along with myself, I think about two or three months ago, walked around to all the schools and talked to the principals, and the common feedback that we got was that the service was great with Rico, but the equipment was starting to break down a lot. And, you know, from my perspective, since I've been in the industry for 11 years, you usually do see more issues in the fourth year of a contract with this type of equipment, similar to cars and other mechanical machines as well. So we certainly want to pride ourselves on the ability to respond accordingly, and feel that we've done that. And so my question was, you know, how many, you know, on the jams, how many less jams, you know, will you anticipate getting with the new equipment and the sharper equipment for $2,761 a month more? You know, can you quantify this, and are you going to go and quantify this in five years from now? Last note that I felt related to our service capabilities. About one year ago, the business manager at the time asked Rico to help with ideas to lower the current printing costs with existing printer contracts, which was through a separate vendor. Rico swapped out black and white devices at Dennis Elementary and Five Points Elementary to color multifunction devices, so the district could print the color of .051 per page rather than the agreed upon .085 with that current contract. And Rico did this and swapped out those devices, and no financial impact to the district. I certainly understand and respect that the district tried to make, you know, choice of your own vendor. However, in light of the information provided, I'd serve as the board to vote no for 6.1, 6.2, and ask that additional reviews be completed on the financial investment before you. You know, as a taxpayer, you know, I believe that the questions that should be considered are, why would the board choose to spend an additional $165,000 over the next five years of taxpayers' money for copiers? You know, is this physically responsible, and could that $165,000 go towards the advancement of our children's education? So I just want to say thank you again, and appreciate the time to present this in front of you. And I had mentioned earlier, so because I really care, we care about the business, and I've been in business for 11 years, and, you know, feel that we have done a good job and put together a good proposal for you, and our service performance has been good as well. I didn't know if there's any questions for me, or if I...
If I may, Mr. Anderson?
Just to make sure I understood what you said correctly. Our specifications require a 97 percent uptime, and your history was 98 percent, but we denew for not meeting that requirement, or we gave you a lower grade than the maximum on that requirement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item 3.1, Treasures Report, approval of the tariff void, approval for the treasurer to change the authorized users of the safety of the box, a thank thing to tariff void. Very good idea. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 3.2, approval for your new contract for board docs for one year. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Motion, roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes, and move on to the superintendent's report with the 4.1 policy revisions that we were asked to vote on separately.
Correct, so we're asking, it's second reading, which is to move forward with policies. Asking for approval of, the first policy will be policy 169.1, public participation at board meetings.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Yeah, we discussed this at length at the last meeting, but, you know, changing this policy and requiring people sign up in advance before they speak, and shortening the amount of time that they have to speak, none of those things are going to improve safety. You know, if we're really concerned about a gun coming in here to a board meeting, what I would ask is that we be presented with a policy that would allow the seven of us to conceal, carry our firearms, and then we would have a real deterrent to that. As you, I'm sure you know, my no vote is going to block the adoption of this change, because to change the bylaws, it requires a two-thirds majority of the full board, which would require four votes. And so I will be voting no, and I just want to make sure that the minutes will reflect that the motion does not carry.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
So whether or not we'll be able to change the, change the policy.
It would require three, require four of us to agree to the decision.
They're very dense, but water that. But that's fine, we can, we can break it back.
Go ahead.
It's in section 0131 of our bylaws.
I'm sorry, what section?
0131.
Let's move forward, we'll break it back. Yeah, we'll break it back. Not a problem. Staff gifts will be the next one. I did add the line about parents and writing a note, if they so choose. Everything else is straight out of Neola, as were the other, the other policies as well. So that would be policy 3214, staff gifts.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I would like to add that leaving the way that it is, where our employees are absolutely wrong, because it allows me the authority to give them the right to break the law. So I would suggest that you read the information from our attorney, because it is a $25 law, and it's not in our policy, because the policy's outdated. So if we leave it the way that it is, it's going to be a real problem.
Just a question. The, right now, the policy, and I made this comment again at the last meeting, but just want to know if there are any changes. Right now, it just says a $25 limit, doesn't speak to the number of $25.
No.
And it doesn't speak to how often, or the time span between $25.
There's no way we can have a limit, otherwise teachers would be telling, Johnny, I'm sorry, Johnny, you're giving me five gifts, you can't give me more than that.
Right. I just, I just want to put the note caution out there, that it's not us that decides whether that gift, that fifth gift, the tammy gate, exceeds the requirement of being of nominal value. That's the, that's the Board of misconduct or the Ethics Commission that ultimately makes that decision that happens to the board.
Would you agree we should write policies that protect our employees?
I do, and I do, that's why I think those extra, that extra guidance is important. I'm fine with putting the $25, so don't, don't get me wrong, that's good guidance, but I'm worried that it doesn't go far enough, and that we're leaving employees vulnerable to these two situations, if somebody brings multiple gifts, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the limit is. So, that's, that's the only comment there.
I guess I don't view this as, by adding extra language in the policy, as us protecting our employees. I view it in all honesty as the board attempting to overly control the lives of our employees. The employees, I believe, are professional, I believe that they are intelligent. We can make them aware of what the regulations are, but is it our obligation or our right to control their lives lockstep by telling them, you can't have more than X of this and Y of that? No, it's not. I'm going to get it more clear.
Yeah, well, I agree with you, Dr. Malone, and the, I agree that we don't want to control it. And I guess, don't misunderstand my point. I don't think we should put those extra terms in there, because I think that just creates a quagmire. I like the Mason policy that just says, gifts are discouraged, notes of appreciation are encouraged.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Once again, I have to do research.
We will.
And then staff, yes?
The exact same, it's just for, I think this one might be for the classified employees.
Any other comments? No, we have a motion. We have, should I ask for a motion first?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Roll call? Use policy 6423, use a credit card?
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, can, can we redo that vote? This policy does not have a $25 limit. I'm sorry, yes it does, never mind. We're good.
Use a credit card to, it was basically taken for cheaper. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Transportation, policy 8640, transportation of field and other districts, sponsored trips. Is that a library on, right? Roll call? Or, yeah, I have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Stuckey, second?
Second.
Dr. Malone, second, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President. In this policy, there's a limit on the number of field trips that the board paid for, but there's no limit on the number of extracurricular trips or anything like that. I just have a question as to why we're saying that we'll limit the number of field trips, but there aren't limits on, I'm just curious.
It's expense. If we take a field trip and it's educational, we're required to pay for it. It's very expensive. One per grade level is plenty.
Right, but is the, is the expense any different than for, for extracurricular activities?
Most extracurricular activities are sports.
Right.
It's through the free hundred dollar. This would be something else out of general fund. So, and quite frankly, I mean, we have, the kids have a lot that they need to learn. They need to be in school as well, but we take them to field trips when necessary.
Yeah, I was just curious, I mean, I understand that you get to prove field trips. Right, I mean, we're, we prove that events, but the policy restricts us to a particular number of field trips. I'm thinking the policy is unnecessarily restrictive, because, I mean, you know, we have the budget to do the field trip, if we don't, we don't. Okay, will you answer my question? I guess another question on this one though. With this, we talked a little bit last meeting about parents being able to sign up their kids at the end of the athletic event, so they can take them directly home, as opposed to them riding on the bus back to school, and then having to come to school, pick them up. Would these changes in this policy prohibit us, or prohibit parents from picking up their children at an athletic event if they sign them out with the COVID short, or whoever that is?
John would like to comment on this, I know you've dealt with everything for this particular policy.
No, it would not, it would not prevent parents from picking up their own students.
But they will have to get notice to pick up their students.
Correct.
Which we've had some difficulty with. Some parents not wanting to cooperate with that level, but we need to know where the kids are at and where they're hours away from the school district.
Right, but what we had was a process where the coach had like a list of all the kids or roster, and that parents were allowed to, I guess, get with the coach and then sign them out off that roster, so the coach knew that the parents were now taking their kid, and that they, the coach didn't have to watch them or be concerned about them being transported back to school. Are we still doing that?
Well, really, what policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, says parents will have to notify the coach. How that happens is my responsibility and guideline. That would be the procedure to make that happen. That's not something happening in the board policy.
Okay, well, let me make this suggestion then. Can we add a statement to this policy that says, superintendent shall develop guidelines permitting release of students to custodial parents after an activity for which the district has provided transportation?
That's already in your bylaws that offer to that, so I don't know why we'd need to add that.
Well, what this would make clear is that the parents aren't allowed to sign out, that we'll have a policy that permits parents to do this. Because I've heard some complaints from folks that they haven't been allowed to do this, and that they, that their kid ended up having to get transported back to school, and then, you know, cost the kid an hour of homework time, because they have to go back to school, a parent had to come pick them up, and then take them home. Whereas if the parent had been able to sign them out, like we had done in the past, they could have taken that child directly home and saved an hour of homework time. So what I'm asking is that we put into the policy a statement that says, we'll have a procedure that allows that to happen.
But I'm saying once again, that is my responsibility, is once the board approves policy, is to put guidelines into place to carry those out. Now, your bylaws say that, you hold me to that now, that's not necessary to have that in there. You're repeating a bylaw.
Well, on top of that, in order to change the language which is there, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to have to have an amendment to, to the language of policy. We just can't say, let's change the language. I think we're going to have to amend that if we want that to occur. And also, this has gone through a first grievance on past policy committee. I'm not comfortable with us making changes at the last minute in language.
And quite frankly, him, I called you this week, I text you, I emailed all of the board members, I put audios out for all of you here to make this as easy as possible. If you would have emailed, this, I could talk to each board member.
Well, let me respond to that, Mr. Stuckey. Our last conversation was a text message where you were going to call me sometime between 4:00 and 6:00 this evening, and...
And I had a meeting with Mr. Rufus today.
And that you would call me after you were done.
Well, I think we can go back.
So, I mean, I would like to see that statement add, I don't think it adds a restriction, it still gives the superintendent the authority to come up with that procedure. The only thing that I'm asking is that, that the procedures that he would develop would include this provision that parents can pick these kids up directly from the, from the event.
I just think it's redundant, Mike. I had kids in this system in the late 1990s, and I always requested that my daughter write back for a soccer game, and she always wrote back. I don't know.
I, that hasn't always been the case, but recently it's become an issue. That's why I'm asking for change.
If it's become an issue, then I think this gentleman right here is the person that needs the answer for that, if there's an issue.
I'll be discussing with you in the executive session tonight, some of this issue.
I don't think we need, every time there's an issue, that's, he's a gentleman. So if there's an issue, then let's, let's talk about it. Every time there's an issue, we don't necessarily solve it by putting in a language, instead of going to the source and saying, why is there an issue? That's just my thought, but, but let's, let's, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
And policy 8660, transportation of students by private vehicle. I assume that's the same thing.
Correct, this one's far better.
So the parent request of the coach, that their student, their child can ride home with them. There's a process.
Correct.
The coach knows of a process in place, so that the system knows where every child is.
Is there anything different than that, Joe?
No.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Ragano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Okay, item passed.
Mr. President, I make an observation here. Mr. Grando, your statement that, are you saying that all these policies require a supermajority to be enacted?
No, the bylaws require a supermajority.
Which of these, which ones would be, which ones would be effective?
That gives the zeros, the policies that start with zeros.
The policies that start with zeros?
Yes.
Now, these policies start with zeros, I do it.
0161.
0161.
Yes.
And once again, for the record, our part of the talk.
What I'm saying, if, if in fact that's the case, I will be honest, I, I have a real problem with that, because I believe that the majority of the Board of Education speaks for the board, not a supermajority. not a super majority. And to have in our bylaws language that allows, uh, one or two board members to, uh, circumvent the will of majority, I, I have a problem with that concept.
Yeah, the, um, there's a concept in government called tyranny of majority. And our founding fathers went to great lengths to put in provisions to avoid the tyranny, uh, tyranny of the majority. So certain provisions, like the rules of the board and how we, how we operate as a board, do require a super majority. I think that's entirely appropriate for the rules of how the board's gonna operate.
Okay, I, I certainly understand about tyranny of the board. So, uh, and I guess I simply have made a statement and I kind of let it.
Well, it's, we'll do some research on it. Correct. If that's the case, then we'll consider, never mind what the bylaws are if it's not. And, and these ba- basically, these motions will allow pass.
Mr. President, though, if I may, uh, my role is to advise you on what I feel is appropriate. The safety issues, we've seen all over TV. People walk in and they shoot people to the table. Our community was crystal clear on their thoughts on carrying weapons in our school. So nonetheless, I'm trying to advise you that I do believe we're exposed in that area and I think it's, it's a questionable situation. So, uh, Mr. Gano, I see it should be different, but if someone walks through this door, we have an issue in here and someone gets hurt, all I can do is try to advise you. I, my role.
You're, you're a hundred percent right. If somebody just walked through that door with, with a weapon and intending to use it, we're entirely vulnerable. There's no, there's no armed security here. It's, it's us throwing the water bottles out. And, and I guess that's my point. If, if we're really concerned about that, um, water bottles and paper cups and pitchers of water aren't gonna do any good. And if, if we're really concerned about it, I mean, unless we're gonna have armed security at every meeting, and I think that's just totally unnecessary, then we should defend ourselves. And that's, I guess, is my point in that comment.
Thank you for letting me state my opinion.
It's like it's one extreme and the other.
Right.
There's, there's always middlemen. But, but we could, we could stay here all night on this, so... So, item four point two, approval of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen calendar.
Correct. This was the calendar I presented at the last board meeting for the, not next year, but the year after.
Roll, I mean, motion?
Second.
Any comments? Uh, roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Motion passes. And moving on to item four point three, approval of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen K through six grade instructional school fees.
Correct. These are the school fees that will now be in general fund, not in O-O nine counts. Um, I sent you out the, the differential. So these have been reduced anywhere from five to twenty dollars a grade level, but this is only K six. Once we get the eBooks adopted, and Tim, uh, Mr. Strittonberger will bring everyone up to speed on that later tonight, then we will bring the secondary school fees, although it will probably be impacted potentially less with the eBooks.
Chair motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Um, okay.
Question?
Are, are these the fees that we're going to see plugged into the financial forecast later tonight?
Yeah.
So they're already into the budget? And these fees are significantly less than they were last year.
Five to twenty dollars depending on the grade level.
Well, it seemed like they were a fair amount lower. Kindergarten's like twenty-five dollars, right? And most grades were thirty-five dollars.
Oh, some were almost seven. So if you sold them on the grade level.
Yeah, and then the, the highest was maybe six grade if you took band and that was forty-seven dollars. So I, I didn't go and look at what they were, but I think that they were markedly reduced and I appreciate that. Um, I'm still gonna lobby that those fees, fees go away because if we subsidize athletics, we should subsidize academics from the general fund. And so, uh, I'm still gonna argue that they should, we should make them go away. And it looks like we have the money that we can do that because our fund balance, our, our cash, ending year cash balance is going up. So, thank you. I appreciate the effort and progress that we've made so far.
Okay. Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four point four, approval of create one special education, educational coordinator position.
Correct. This is, we discussed this. Um, we already have one to replace. This will be additional, uh, to address our special needs, our IP. We're at, uh, well over seven hundred IPs now. This will be paid out with CCI P via the Continuous Improvement Plan, the other C, uh...
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, Continuous Improvement Plan. Done a million of them and they're, they're, done a ton to do. But nonetheless, um, we have discovered that, that all the money wasn't being used out of that. If you don't, that's give back. So we do absolutely need to, and we actually had to here, uh, for numerous years. And, uh, with the oversight, I think it will increase our ability to be compliant and certainly keep down our legal costs and, uh, when we're not compliant based on that. So we will have two people in those areas that are fully certified in their special ed.
Any more motions?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any other comments?
Just a few questions. So is this that second position equivalent to the first in terms of responsibilities, days worth?
It will be. In the past, we've had a special ed director. We're not gonna go with a special ed director next year. Ms. Benson, um, as I said, when I took this job, I wanted people in central office that had done all areas, building principals, do all areas as building principals. She is gonna oversee the compliance in special ed and also continue with HR. She's really got that under control. But both of these will be positions that are out in the building, run now, you please. They'll not be central office.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four point five, approval of resolution authorizing two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen membership in the Ohio High School At- High School Athletic Association.
Yes, uh, this is, um, I added this for approval tonight. It's not something we discussed in work session. I think I emailed you all about it and did do an audio. This is for the O-H-S-A-A membership, basically all of our athletics. If we want to be in the league, we have to pay this membership.
Uh, motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll, any comments? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to Director of Human Resources, five point one, approval of professional expense member.
For the superintendent, we are bringing forward, um, an approval for the professional expense reimbursement MOU. Um, this was left out of the last, um, negotiated agreement. It is something that we have been doing since two thousand and six. It allows reimbursement for teachers who are approved through the curriculum office to go on professional development, um, and in-service opportunities.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Comments?
Um, we, the, this is actually a change in the rate. The employees are still allowed to go on professional development. However, the rate in the contract today is a different rate than what we're proposing to change it to. Is that right?
That is not my understanding. I believe there's a lump sum of forty thousand dollars that we use for professional development and it's the same as what we've used for the last couple of years.
I'm not sure. Maybe I didn't ask my question correctly. What, when, when you made your opening statement, you said that employees were not allowed to go on professional development now? In some of the language, or that this new language would allow them to?
This language will allow them to be reimbursed for some professional development that is pre-approved through the curriculum office in order for it to be, um, something that is aligned with our district goals and what Mrs. Strittonberger and different committees have decided.
So my question was, I thought that they were already allowed to do that. This was a discrepancy between the rates, between that old MOU in two thousand and eight and the current contract.
My understanding is the rate is exactly the same as it has been.
Okay, and it's an entire clause, admission of a clause? And we just left out reimbursement for professional development in total?
That is correct because since we have not done, um, any negotiations since two thousand and eight, we had numerous MOUs that were out in different places, different departments. And this is one that was not added into the contract. It was, it was just missed by both negotiation dates. So yes, we have, for the MOU that we've had since two thousand and six, we have been reimbursing through a fund people for professional development. This is allowing us to continue to do that. That's my understanding.
Or, or, yeah, it's been, it's been going on, but we really didn't have a language for it.
Correct. We just have the MOU language. We didn't have anything in the negotiation scheme.
Okay, well, I guess I'm confused because I thought this was just a rate change. I mean, I certainly want them to be able to be reimbursed. I thought that they were being reimbursed. And then it was, um, um, I guess, the, that previous MOU had different rates, meaning it's older than it was. Or no, it actually had higher rates. They were allowed to be reimbursed at, uh, the current contract. I think it's some lower number than what this old MOU had. So it was kind of a rate change. We were increasing the amount from, I don't even know what the current contract said. But we were increasing that, from that amount up to a hundred and fifty dollars a day for lodging and to forty-five dollars a day for meal expenses. That's what I thought the change was. Is that...
Chair, is that the change?
What, what was happening is people were turning in the addresses and they went to the new contract. Uh, the rates were that, uh, to the old contract from the, from before. The MOU was done to increase those rates, but when the new negotiating agreement occurred, those new rates weren't put into the new book, so it kept, it had the old in there. So once that new book is done, it supersedes the MOU. So that's why the MOU base of the rate back to the higher amount, that was intended to be. It was just oversight and not in the MOU or the new book.
Right, now, I guess, my, my question is, does, uh, does board's attorney, Bill Deers, who negotiated the contract, would he agree that it's an oversight? Because this thing went through a lot of review. Uh, S E A drafted the original and then it was the board's job to review the contract and we, we did an extensive review of it. Does Mr. Deers agree that it's an oversight?
Yes, per an email that I believe I sent onto the board when it was requested, um, two board meetings ago. He responded that, yes, it was just an oversight.
But it energetically, or, uh, uh, Mr. Deers made it clear from the beginning, this district had done MOUs for almost eight years. We all agreed we should have never done it. He was clear, there are, we are gonna try to find all of these MOUs. But when we got into negotiating, it was almost impossible to figure out what they had done because there was no one area these were centrally located. So he was clear, I am gonna do my best to find all of these MOUs and this one serves.
But, and, you know, if, if it's truly an oversight, I don't have a problem with it. But at the same time, both parties got in there and we had those contracts in front of us and, and everybody agreed to those contracts. And so, I mean, we, it, it's hard to go back and say years after, well, and, and we're not that far after that. This was just, you know, not quite a year ago that we did this. But, you know, if another thing comes up next year, I mean, it's kind of, it's hard to go back and say it's another oversight. That's, that's like this. I just, I, I just want to be comfortable that it is in fact an oversight if Mr. Deers was the lead negotiator, so that I'm fine with that.
Yeah, sure, maybe it was an oversight.
Yes. Um, okay. Does it make sense to also include in this MOU, uh, the, uh, we want to switch waiver day, well, we wanna add the waiver days and then we would like to remove those late start dates from the future ca- future calendar? And, um, we have, I guess, the late start dates are in the contract.
The waiver day.
The waiver days.
For one year.
The waiver days.
And after that, we'll go back to the late start days. And, and we're talking about things here that prepare teachers to teach kids.
Well, I'm not arguing against them.
With the late start days, our teachers need to be reimbursed when they go out to professional development and they need to be protected.
Right, but I, I thought we had an agreement that, that we were going to forego those late start dates in favor of the late...
And here, right, next year we are.
Just for one year.
And we are working on that MOU.
The state only gives you those waiver days, one time.
But anyway, you can't incorporate the MOU. You have to just be always keeping it something.
Correct. And, and just to clarify, the last time we met with S E A, because they are teachers, we discussed performance-based payment. That was what the discussion about. We will get the MOU finished.
Okay. You don't see any issues with that there? The, uh, the waiver day, uh, late start day.
No, the teachers and all the administrators were very excited about it.
That, I mean, that'll save well over a hundred thousand dollars plus. They like to be with their kids. It actually came to L M C that we were pulling them out of class so much for training. They're the ones that wanted the waiver day so they could be in class with their kids.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call? Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ms. Benson?
Five point two, approval to create certified physician. And this is a part of the enrollment increase at the high school and the kids first looking at the new, um, way that they schedule. And there is a need for a, an added social studies teacher position. Um, this will get them in their department to be, um, closer to the number with the rest. There's still one down, but at, at this point, in language arts, science and socials, or, um, science and language arts, they have, um, two or three more teachers in that department than social studies. So due to the enrollment change and the needs and wants of the students, we are asking for approval to create a high school social studies teacher position for next year.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second? Second? Any comments? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes. Yeah.
Motion passes.
We have five point three, approval of personnel items. At this time of the year, we're very busy and, um, HR, as you can see, um, as Mrs. Tischler had to put on for your approval, a lot of one-year contracts for new teachers who are, um, have been evaluated and are gonna be given another one-year contract. We also have some resignations at this time and an abundance of the personnel issues in here beyond the awarding the one and two-year limited contracts for teachers or all of the non-renewals of our supplementals, which have to be done, uh, for O R C code.
So just to reiterate, that is the O R C code. We're not renewing all of our supplemental people.
That is correct. I was saying, O R C three-three-one-nine-point-oh-eight-three.
I remember last year when that happened, it hasn't been carried out that way in a while. I received a flood of emails while we were terminating all of these. It sure, it certainly does.
It keeps us compliant.
It's the law.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item five point four?
Item five point four, we are looking for the approval for Superintendent Todd Petrie, the approval of the, uh, giving a continuing contract to Jennifer Bogey, high school guidance staff.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Your second?
Second.
My good colleagues. Sure, but, um, on the continued contracts, the way that we do these, it's notice tenure. We do follow the law in terms of what people need to have. One of the things we also did this year is we look at the teachers' evaluations and we look for their engagement of students, the way they communicate with the community and the way that their professionalism and the way that they build relationships. The three of the areas we really focus on when we look at these particular, uh, individuals. I can tell you, we had, um, numerous teachers apply and not all of them are on here because some were, were told that they weren't at the level yet of a tenured teacher. So to, for people to understand, because I know this has made it to the news a lot, uh, just because a person applies for this, they do not get it under this particular administration. There are some things that we look at in terms of that. I can tell you on the first one, Jennifer Bogey, I evaluate her himself. And we have some of our most outstanding teachers. There's only five, correct?
That's correct.
That are here for this. So this is one of the things that, when you look at running an organization and maintaining high-quality teachers for kids, this is one of the things that is definitely something that teachers want. And, and if we're unable to grant these types of things, it is gonna be very difficult to maintain a high-quality staff here. Because this is something in other districts, they pick our top teachers off in a flash. And that absolutely is not best for kids.
No, that's right.
Absolutely not.
Is there a motion?
So move. Where is it?
So, any other comments?
Um, yes. Um, I'm going to vote against all of these continued contracts. And it's not because it's about any particular individual. And it's not because it's about any particular individual. I'm sure that they're all verified teachers or counselors, just basically. I just agree with the practice of awarding the lifetime contracts. Every employer needs to have the means to ensure that employees continue to meet their job expectations. And it's been proven very difficult to remove a teacher from their position as their behavior is just particularly egregious. So to me, it just doesn't make any sense to award those lifetime contracts. As that limits our ability to ensure that everybody will continue to meet those job expectations.
If I could comment, I have removed tenured teachers as the principal. If you're willing to do an in-depth evaluation and it is performance-based, it can be done. Is it more work? Absolutely. But a good, solid instructional leader and a principal will have the means to be able to do it. So it is more than possible to be able to do it. They still have to uphold the exact same conditions as everyone else in the school district.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Petroni provided me a comment he would like me to read from their perspective this evening. So this is Mr. Petroni's comment. My apology for missing this important meeting. I cannot support the recommendation for offering any continuing contracts. This is, again, the wrong direction to take this district because for lack of any internal processes, we place at risk our children's education in the long term. The degree of difficulty we now face in the removal of employees who work is lapsed into the standard will only make that much harder, will only be made that much harder. The children in those teachers' classrooms will be the ones ultimately pay the price for granting guaranteed lifetime employment to individuals who are able or desire to meet only the most minimalistic standards. I'm afraid the lack of competitiveness will not induce greater creativity, initiative, or drive in our staff, again, to the detriment of our children. Tenure's time has passed, and the reasons for its existence have also come to pass with modern workplace legislation that better deals with the true injustices within our workplaces and employment. The law is clear, yet it establishes a ridiculously low bar that works to the detriment of our children's education, and I simply will not support that until we create a better rationale to provide contracts for life. And that is the end of Mr. Petroni's comment.
Well, I certainly do hate that for our staff, because they work hard every day. And for this, for them to see that we don't have a cohesive board that truly supports their work or believes in it and deems it minimalistic, I hate that for our staff, I really do. Especially in this district, this calendar.
Mr. President?
Yes.
To me, I taught thirty-five years, and along with many tenured teachers, I can't think of a one that went down in their ability and the way they taught, you know, over their tenured years. I don't agree with that at all.
I would agree. I think it so minimalizes the professionalism of our teachers, who are clearly our most outstanding teachers. What we're saying is that if we give them, you know, as you and Mr. Petroni have defined as a lifetime contract, which I totally disagree with that concept, but that's your language, not mine. You're implying that, well, these teachers are going to all of a sudden sit back and do nothing, and our students are going to suffer. Several times in those statements I heard, our kids are going to suffer if these teachers get continuing contracts. Nothing could be further from the truth. What we're actually doing is we are rewarding our best, most outstanding employees, telling them, we value you, we want you to stay as part of our district, so in fact, our students can benefit by you being here. And I just, I also have renewed tenured teachers before, so it can happen. But to, I think it's almost a scare tactic, that if you give tenure, then you could just hands-off on these given teachers. And that simply is not the case. So the law provides it, it allows it. I believe that our district should encourage this practice because it does reward our best teachers.
And my only comment would be, it seems that, once again, it's either all the way to the left, all the way to the right, and regarding the competitiveness for the teachers, I think it's all accountability of the education, educational team and administration. And the old twenty years ago, you became a teacher, whatever the time period was, you got tenure. It pretty much happened. But that was years ago. When you had less than fifty percent of your teachers who applied for tenure now getting it, I mean, there's accountability. If I was a teacher that didn't get it, I would say, I'd want to know, tell me what I need to do to get it, because it is something I'm going to strive for. And so, I think, there again, it's all in how it's administered, and it's not, it's not all or nothing. And we need to hold on to our good teachers, absolutely. And we've lost, what, thirty percent of our teaching staff?
Well, you're going to see it's not in our five-year forecast, that our enrollment, we've lost students, which costs us money. And last year during negotiations, we had hundreds of emails of parents upset, starting to pull their kids out, and clearly from the statistics, it looks that way. So when people hear that we're not going to support highly qualified teachers, that the position of the district that gets very bold, it's not the positive that's released to the community, that is going to become the perception, and it already is becoming the perception, spring row schools. Again, all I can do is advise you, but that we're moving in the wrong direction when we don't support teachers. They are the number one thing that will change every direction structure for students. Number one.
With that, a roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
I have staying.
Regano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Five point five, approval of continuing contract for Christine Bennett, five points three-two teacher.
Okay, um, motion?
So.
Mr. Stuckey made the motion, Dr. Malone seconded. Any comment? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Five point six, approval of continuing contract for Molly Zulgavas, five points three-two teacher.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Five point seven, approval of continuing contract for Kiff Acorian, junior high reading teacher.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Five point eight, approval of continuing contract, Matthew Blair, district ESL teacher.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
No.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hi, Mr. President, I'd like to thank you. I think that will send a much-needed message to our teachers that they are appreciated, and I hope next year we have more applying for this. It's much needed in this little district right now from our out.
Mr. Petrie, just what the audience, you may know, I have staying from the first vote. That is to avoid a possible conflict of interest because the person in question is a volunteer applying. That's why I think.
Moving on to business managers' report. Now, makes it so much.
Gentlemen, with the, your approval to enter into an agreement with Millennium Business Systems, supplying copiers for the district and services and maintenance, I'd charge copiers from the sixty months commencing until I want to go.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a question, any comments?
Mr. Powell, have you heard Mr. Hobbs' comments? Will you address those, Mr. Powell?
All the comments, or certain ones, or?
Well, I guess the ones that caught my particular attention is that we rated them lower, even though they met the ninety-seven percent criteria. If ninety-seven percent is the requirement, and they have a history of ninety-eight percent, why wouldn't that get the maximum score on that?
Well, but, over the years, as Rico purchased Icon, it was Icon, what a contractor, right? There was a good relationship here. As Rico purchased Icon, and they moved away from the amount of service and things like that, their service hasn't suffered because the people that are servicing us here are outstanding, but service all throughout the company has suffered greatly. There are many schools that have no longer had Rico copiers in the school districts after this contract was renewed. Similar to what happened to Xerox in the nineteen-nineties, as they moved away from supporting school districts as a whole, those just became less and less friendly for school districts. The Rico machines, the small office machines are fine, those run fine, they're a little slow, but they're fine. But the large machines do not take the abuse of the new school district, it just doesn't take the abuse. The ninety percent uptime is based on service calls to them and all. The problem is that our staff unjam the machines a lot. And I'm not saying that the sharps aren't going to jam, all copiers jam, that's a fact of life. But these copiers jam a lot. And the quality of the service that's being provided now is not what it was five years ago. They have no proactive service that they do that they used to do when Rico was Icon. So the service has suffered a lot over the years. So that's why it's been marked out. And that's my experience of working with Icon Rico for the last fourteen years.
So, just to make sure I understand, Millennium, Sharp, do we have any experience with that?
We do not as a district, no. But they have several schools that they've been moving into over the last three, four years.
But the track record with Rico, at least for the documented incidents, is ninety-eight percent, and the requirement is ninety-seven percent.
Right, but you go and connect the conference we have here, and the staff is very, very unhappy with the conference. That's why we're ending the lease six months early to get out of this.
Well, if I may interject, we have a labor management committee started this year. It's a district leadership team. It, within two months, was on that agenda. And I had to ask John to come to the meeting from the principals. And I think one of the, the old Rico mentioned the principals hadn't mentioned these things. Last year, it was the issue, and I think that's why someone goes for a replace. But what is happening with our large machines, they're tearing up so often. The teachers are overusing the smaller machines because they can trust those, which then they're printing mass copies on the smaller machines, which is also where on. So it has been a great issue that we've had to deal with. Yes. And when teachers can't make copies, then they're not prepared for class. So some people, I'm certain, will see this as, well, this is an expense. But we have to have products that work, is that so?
I understand that. It sounds like we have some redundancy, though. I mean, you described these smaller copy machines, which may not be as efficient, but if one breaks down, there is redundancy?
Well, there's a big difference between a ninety or a hundred-page machine and a thirty-page machine.
Right.
In terms of speed on trying to get these copies, so.
So right now, if you wanted to use a high-speed machine, you'd have to go to another building?
Well, no, there, any building, there's typically one or two or three high-speed machines. And the problem is that as those break down or jam or are down for service, because, think about it, Dennis is a prime example. When I got here, they had one eleven-hundred-page machine, two fifty-page machines. When that eleven-hundred-page machine went down, they had two fifty-page machines, and that machine was down every single day. And even at a two-point-nine-hour response time, that means that machine was down three hours a day. And I know they say they're ninety-eight percent, but you could talk to any of the teachers. We had that machine switched out and put two machines in there, ninety-page and eighty-page, when I got here. So they work with us, I'm not denying that. But in terms of, in comparison to the other copy companies, Rico as a company is not nearly as good as Icon. And that's just a fact of life.
Well, and again, it's not our intent to diminish any company. I mean, the gentleman there, well-spoken, very factual, appreciate that, very good service. However, at this point, we do really want to go in the right direction.
So I guess my last remaining concern is that if our requirements that we put out in the RFP said ninety-seven percent, and there's documented evidence that Rico meets the requirement at ninety-eight percent, are we now in a situation where we can have a legal protest?
Because our experience is not ninety-eight percent.
We're complaining.
The other thing that I just wanted to bring up is, in terms of the cost that you've got in front of you, the cost that was actually within the RFQ that was responded to, the Millennium Business System cost was ten thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-one cents. Once this was accomplished, and we ran the results through financial committee, I met with Millennium, and I changed some of the copiers. We are actually getting four additional copiers in to help below and to get some additional things. So that's why it's a little bit more expensive. It's not, it's not that they were twenty-seven hundred dollars more on what was given in the RFQ. When we looked at what was there, and we went and met with the administrative staffs in the building, this allowed more bang for the buck, and that's why there's fewer copy counts to keep the price down right now, but more machine, number one. Number two, the cost per copy, Millennium Business System had the lowest cost per copy. Three point zero-three, point zero-zero-three for Black, and point zero-three-six for Company. So, Walton Company, they had the lowest cost per copy.
So before you amended the contract, did you see the amended result here?
Correct.
But before you amended it, when you were comparing apples to apples, what was the cost difference?
It was, well, it was about, theirs was nine thousand something, and this is ten thousand four hundred seventy-three. So it was about fourteen hundred dollars.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Gentlemen, this is the lease agreement that we need approval for through fifth-year date for the sixty months.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? Or do you have a comment? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the, there is some property behind Five Points Elementary that has been farmed by the farmer that is next door. And for years, it was, had no cost to him. And one of the things the previous board did was, they wanted us to get some sort of value out of that land. So what we're asking for is approval for a lease agreement for the farm ground used. They would be paying a hundred ten dollars an acre for fourteen point seven acres, something like that, for a total of one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. It's just a one-year agreement, will be back again next year, probably a little bit earlier.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Board member reports. Mr. Stuckey, you have any report?
Not enough.
Mr. Regano?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I have to take that. Take two minutes, I told you one earlier. My common core medical.
My Common Core minute. Yeah, I talked in previous meetings. I touched on the pitfalls of having a national curriculum and the potential for the big-money lobbyists and statist influence of society and culture to either their commercial advantage or to an un-American ideology. I've also talked before about the standards being untested and unproven and it being unwise to adopt those in that circumstance. But, you know, what if those Common Core standards are not all that they're promised to be? Certainly, certainly the experts at ODEE are looking out for us, right? But let's look back to two thousand and one, when we were presented the current Ohio standards. And they were introduced with all the same promises of academic improvement, preparing kids for the future. And Ohio invested millions in new curriculum, millions on new tests. And the additional accountability was there to accelerate student achievement. And what we now know is that those promises have not been filled and they were empty promises. We've got measurements, but the measurements change. They change the standard every year, it seems. And, you know, they came, they became watered down to the point where sixty percent on that state math test was deemed to be deficient. The number of remedial courses that kids take in college has increased, and they're less ready for college than they were in two thousand and one. And we're told the answer to this problem is a new set of standards and a new test. And they call that, that collection the Common Core. And they're not going to pilot it. We're just, we're just supposed to trust them again. And, you know, neither Ohio nor the federal governments were buying any money for this. I'll call it anything because that's really what it is. It's an experiment because it's not been tested. So we're on our own as far as funding this. A new curriculum and online testing costs millions of dollars. It's always a safe thing for Board of Education to point to ODEE and say, we're just going to follow their lead. That's a very politically safe decision. It's the easy decision. And who could guess, who could second-guess anybody for following the track, following the herd? But since we're spending Springbrough Taxpayer money to do this, we owe it to them to do the right thing. We owe them the world I wish. We owe them an explanation of the alternatives. We owe them a chance to weigh in on the merits and demaths of those alternatives. And we owe them an explanation for our final decision, whatever that may be, and how, and an explanation how that decision is best for Springbrough students. There's a national debate out there. And some have dismissed the Common Core opposition as just political. Well, they're wrong. Personally, I've learned more about Common Core than I've done about states. I'm all about, I'm all for rising standards, but realize I have nothing to be gained by speaking out about this. My only motive is I want what's best for Springbrough kids. And I just don't trust the state or the federal planners anymore with the future anymore. I'm asking the board that we, all I'm asking for the board is that we become aware of the issues on both sides and that the good and the bad, before we make the decision on it, before we spend lots of money implementing it. I'm asking parents to become informed as well. After my comments last meeting, I received a note from parents saying that they wanted to know more about Common Core, but they wanted to hear from proponents as well as opponents. And I, in my comments, have been negative towards it, and I recognize that. What I'd like to suggest is that we set aside an evening for presentations on the Common Core and that we have speakers come and explain the issues, whether it be, you know, Mr. Petrie, Mrs. Strittonberger, or we could get somebody from ODEE, OSBA, Ford Institute to speak on behalf of the standards. And we can find somebody who would provide the opposite point of view. So I guess my question for the board is how about it? I mean, I'll put it together. All we need to do is agree that we'll provide the venue and message out to parents so that we can get into this decision well informed.
If I could, we're not bringing, I keep hearing this list of books, and it certainly isn't that I don't have the courage to stand up and do what's right, because I've shown plenty of courage over the last two years. But we have field-tested questions on all these. When they transfer over, we've had field-tested questions. They tried some of these questions out and piloted part of the assessments this year, which were extremely difficult for our kids. The materials we're buying with the eBooks, we would buy those if we were going to the state judges to stay with the current standards. Our kids exceed those standards, and I think they've done pretty well. We blow them out of the water. Next, with any of the standards that are there, if the board doesn't like all those certain standards, we won't teach them. That's your right to do that. A lot of these states have taken a variation of the standards and then made them their own and tweaked them a little bit, but they still like the national, the national testing. So there's a lot of things to do. But again, this list that I keep hearing people talk about, if you, anyone would like to do a public record for any of our requisitions on what we're purchasing for books, I welcome that. I mean, we spend a lot of time trying to find books that we do have in the district. So we by no means have the intent, I mean, we can talk this debate all day and talk about state versus federal control. But from the superintendent's standpoint, all I can tell you is, if we're going to bring new books into the district, we're happy to share those with you, which we already have. If we stay with the same curriculum we have now, we're still going to buy the same books that we're going to purchase. We are looking at growth measures, developmental growth measures of kids, and these standards will be the minimum. But if there's a standard on there that's a fight of you don't like, I'll make sure that we don't teach them. That's not a problem at all. So before we deem that Springbrough School is going to be led to teach some of these books that could perhaps indoctrinate our kids, I guess my question is, do you think I would want to do that? No, I wouldn't. So the bottom line is, the books that we're going to buy, they're coming before you for a reason. So we are not buying off any list. That, that's the whole discussion with that indoctrination. It's not these standards. If there's a standard that's indoctrinating kids and the five of you agree to it, I'll pull it off. It's not a problem. You can do that as a board. So I guess the question here needs to be, bring the standards to us that are indoctrinating. If the parents feel that way, it's my job to carry it out. It's not Todd Petrie's school. I run this school with Springbrough people and five board members. If there's something about the standards you don't like, bring the specific standards. We'll take care of it. That's all I can offer.
If I might respond. Did not speak about the indoctrination issue tonight. I would save that for the next meeting, and I'd be happy to address that in more detail. I was going to save it for a whole other night. But I guess my suggestion is simply, let's, let's, let's have a, let's have a, I don't want to call it a meeting, but let's have a forum where we can talk about this and hash it out if it does. I think that that would be a real productive thing. The last thing we want to do is to go down a direction and find out that there's a lot of community opposition with it, whether, whether we do Common Core or whether we do something different. Okay? No matter which way we go, I think we want to have the community clearly behind us or at least understanding why we're doing it. And so that's why I'm suggesting that, that let's just set aside an evening and...
The forum focused on the standards, yes. But most of the forums I've watched online, they get off into the books people are using in certain districts. Because I can tell you, in this area, if there was a standard that was indoctrinating, it's just not Springbrough School that would have an issue with it. I'm confident that Franklin, Carlisle, there's good people in these districts. They don't want that for their kids either.
Right. But, and I don't want to, I don't want to go too far down the road. There's issues with, a lot of issues with the math process in Common Core, especially some of the basic math. It's not just indoctrination. I think that many times you have a small group at the national level controlling the standards, that it's undeniable that there's subjects or susceptible, to be a better word, to lobbyists and big-money interests. That's the concern. And that's the concern at voice tonight.
If Strittonberger has given you our everyday math program, it's going to be years before we buy another one, and the digits program that we piloted this year is the one we're proposing to buy, and the standards aren't even implemented yet. So our math curriculum, it's going to be what it is regardless of what these standards stand.
Okay. Well, that's, that's, that's great to know. And, but anyway, I think that it would be good to make sure that we have the community along with us, whichever way we go. And, and if, I mean, that's, that I consider good news, because there's a lot of people that have difficulty. There's a lot of, there's some almost comical news stories on it.
Everyone of us emailed me a reference of books. I apologize. But I'm getting a lot of emails, and some of them are not favorable. And all of them reference books. Let's talk about standards. We've got books, and you're going to approve the ones we buy. It's our policy. So if there's something wrong with the standards, the five of you agree and you listen to the community, just let me know. I'll check. We won't teach them.
And again, I really don't want to get into a deep discussion because the Common Core, it is such a large, large topic. But a couple of observations, I guess. One, whenever someone brings up the topic of standardization, inherently, a lot of people feel that's wrong, that that's bad. It can't be standardized and be good because it's not tailored to our particular situation. So, you know, it's difficult to combat the mental image of standardization being a positive thing. Now, education has changed and continues to change so much. It has changed away from a local issue more to a state and national issue. Our people, our kids are so moldy, they're so transient. Don't we want our students that are from Springbrough, from birth through graduation, to have the same education, to meet the same educational standards, et cetera, as a student who has started his educational career in Greensboro, South Carolina, moves into Springbrough? And now you have two students in the same educational environment? And so there are, there's a positive side to standardization in a sense that our society is a global one anymore. Our kids move. You know, just the challenges that here within the high school, for example, that our guidance has of pushing and meshing courses and transcripts together, from students who have come from all over the country, with different graduation requirements, block scheduling, trimester scheduling, et cetera, et cetera, yet they've all got, you know, they all have to kind of fit somehow. We want our students to leave or come to be, to gain the same relative body of knowledge in a given subject regardless of where they happen to be going to the school. So, and again, I just got, I'm going to cut off that point, but, but I think that we do have to realize that part of the philosophy behind the Common Core movement is that our students are in a national, global society, and therefore there is merit in having standards that are the same in South Carolina or Ohio or Florida. Doesn't mean, again, I think, yeah, the key thing is they're standard. It doesn't say that is all you can teach your kids, but this is going to be kind of the platform, kind of the bottom, at the bottom level, that you have to have this minimum amount taught. And so, so again, I just, I guess that's it.
So to Jim's point, I think we just have round one.
Yeah. And I appreciate, because I, I appreciate the dialogue back and forth. I really do. So, and I guess I am looking for some feedback on whether we can do that forum. I don't think it's, I mean, other than maybe sending out some announcements to the parents on, I'll do the work, put it together.
I think we'd have to just think about it since she just brought it up. And I would leave on the administration way of, this is education, this is, this is what they do.
But it's also informing our community.
Sure.
I have an explaining.
And I'm not, and I'm not going to assume that our community is uninformed just because we have a, we have a, we have, I think we live in a like community. And I'm not saying everybody's knowledgeable. I certainly am not as knowledgeable as I could be. Everybody can gain more knowledge. And perhaps, you know, what I'm listening to Todd, it's about education, it's about learning.
Books, standards.
And, you know, so, so I think both of you bring up good points, and I think it's something we can take under advisement and see if it's something we can consider in the future. So I'm sure Mr. Charlie would have thoughts on this as well.
May just wrap it up.
I don't have a good chance to give my report. You guys keep picking the phone. I don't have anything to do with it, John. I want to talk about my community, but go ahead.
I wasn't finished. We want to go. See, I'll let you. I'd be happy to let you go.
No, no, no. We don't want to do that. I mean, I think you, both of you, Jim, you raised good points, and I think it's something that, I don't think it's a lack of courage. It's, it's something for us to think about. Because we're not up, well, honestly, we're not up to your level in knowledge on this. So I think...
I would like us, well, I think I've done more research than you guys, so I appreciate that feedback. I would like us all to be well-knowledgeable before we make that decision. And I understand, I only want the best for Springbrough kids. If, if everybody else is doing Common Core, and, you know, one of the things I learned is that Massachusetts standards enforcement rates those higher than they were at the Common Core. Well, if we do something better, our kids have an advantage. And so I'd just like to explore those options, especially as we're looking at mission and vision. I just think this is such a right thing to even integrate into those discussions, inform people along the way, and really, you know, find out if, if we dare, if we dare try to do something that'll give our kids an advantage over everybody else. I didn't have one other comment, Mr. Anderson. Sorry to teemo up here, but it is Teacher Appreciation Week, isn't it? And I've written this little article here. My teacher is great at teaching. She spends a long time explaining things when I don't understand. She is patient. She is kind. I can't wait to go to school tomorrow so she can teach me. She takes all students, no matter how rich or poor, smart or struggling, interested or bored, and challenges them to more than they believe they can accomplish. And the amazing thing is, they do it. She's always willing to help. She won't let me give up. And though I may not know this, each day I change a room, a new perspective, a new nugget of knowledge that wasn't there before. She finds the hidden potential and opens my mind to possibilities that I didn't know were within. She doesn't accept my excuses because she's seen me before and encourages many others through the same challenges. Every day, every step, everything taught moves me closer to my dreams. She knows we all have unique talents, and she sees the potential within me, even when I can't see it myself. In her eyes, I am a star waiting to shine.
My only comment was, it was exciting, whatever else. But I did attend the Warren County Career Center board meeting, and they're doing some really nice things. They're, I was on the board back in the late nineties, and it's, it's fun, fun to listen to everything. Saturday, they had a community day. They have a lot of good things going on down there, so I'd put a plug in for the Career Center. And eight point one, public announcements?
Actually, with Mr. Regano hit on it, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, we talked about family a lot, and I was always raised to let your actions speak louder than words, and your actions really pronounced a guard. And your actions tonight to approve these continuing contracts, quite frankly, speak volumes to these teachers and their support. So I want to thank that. I think that was a nice gift to them there in Teacher Appreciation.
And future considerations, nine point one. Any future considerations? I did mention if anybody has... I did mention if anybody has vacation this summer, maybe it would be a good idea to share. I was talking to Mr. Rigano, so that, if possible, we can avoid. Anybody missing, but, but we could always do that on our own. I know I'll be on vacation June, so. I think it's the second, third week.
Charles is one of the busiest people I've ever met.
I think it's twenty-fourth, I think it's the second, the third, that he's up for run together. Anyway, well, I, we don't have those, June, and we're going back to Tuesday, I think, right? In June, so, anyway.
I think in the summer, we have fewer boards. Last off, the month of July, we didn't have a board.
We had negotiations, we have a lot of boards.
Oh. Hours, and hours, and hours, but as far as board, we don't, yeah.
Okay.
One August.
Well, wasn't that? Um, I have ten point one, any committee reports?
Mr. Anderson.
Oh, yeah. Can we take that, sorry?
Send that break before we...
So we're gonna go into work session. So, we wanna take a two-minute break?
I'll, I'll settle.
All right. Five, we'll kind of... Oh, no, no. We'll be, uh, move on to the work session. So we're on...
Yes, I actually break into the full start of five-year forecast. I just wanted to thank the board for allowing the contract that you had allowed a few months ago for us to use, um, TFR or any cluster as a resource to ask for our five-year forecast. Um, through our collaboration, I feel we have a really good forecast presentation tonight, and this is very thoughtful, and he's going to do a presentation to you on the five-year.
Okay, thank you. I hope that we can consider this, uh, very interactionally, and hopefully address questions that we have as we go forward. I would really like to accomplish a couple of things with you tonight. First of all, as you know, there's a new state funding formula. So I'd like to sit a few minutes with you to explain where you're at in that process, the results of that, how it's impacted you, and what we see going forward with that. I'd also like to talk to you about comparison, uh, where were we in October versus where are we today? And to give you some kind of feel for that, and obviously, a very hopefully sense of direction as well. And I guess you need my, my microphone to pick me up.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Sorry about that.
I just wanted to say, Ernie, it's been a pleasure working with you. This has been the most detailed, timely process I've ever seen, so it's greatly appreciated. Very appreciated.
I do get that comment a lot, some people call it tedious, but...
Well, that's, well, when you're dealing with fifty million dollars, it needs to be tedious.
It needs to be, absolutely. Uh, I'm not sure that, uh, this graph got picked up on your page by, for whatever reason, but this just gives us a snapshot of where we are today. And John, I'm not sure I know how to turn this around.
Oh.
Green, okay. 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 And you can see visually with the graphs, uh, how revenue and expenditures are compared. You can see in the past of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And going forward, as you look at two thousand fourteen, you're going to see a bump in revenue, and again in fifteen, some fluctuation in the expenditure in the black bars, and then the gold line represents matchments. We'll certainly talk about those in a little bit more detail with the information that we've been able to gather from your team. I think it's rather amazing when we look at it and we see that right now for two thousand fourteen, uh, we expect revenue to be, uh, about fifty-nine dollars more than expenses. So if I were looking back a year ago, I would say, gee, that's a really good job. I'm not quite sure how you did that, uh, but that's remarkable planning on your part. But I do think we need to identify a few things because it would be very hard for me as a board member to look at that and say, now, wait a minute, we went from fifty-nine million, from fifty-nine dollars to a two-million-dollar revenue shortfall next year. How does that happen? There's a couple of things that have skewed two thousand fourteen that we just need to talk about and put out there. First of all, your textbook purchases were deferred in two thousand fifteen. So there'll be sort of a doubling up of textbook purchases, part of your textbook plan. And I wanna, I just wanna also mention to you guys as well that it's been really encouraging to see the amount of planning that you have with respect to capital planning, uh, supplies, materials, and textbooks. We don't often see that, and it's, uh, actually very, very encouraging in terms of your ability to, um, allocate your budget across all spectrums. When you look at this and you see that the textbooks are deferred, we also had in two thousand fourteen some one-time revenue. And in essence, without these things happening, we would've actually spent about a million dollars more this year than we had come. And that's important to that one. That also makes the transition a little bit easier. And I'll make sure, Mr. Rigano, I see you right here, I'll make sure that we get this page. I'm not sure, some of the copies did not seem to have that full...
Yeah, do you have, uh, page seven? Page seven, you showed that, please, please.
It's page, yeah, it's page five, but I noticed on my copy that page five was blank from the bar graph data. I don't know what, probably just running through the copy. But that'll give you a little bit more of a transition from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen. And then by the same token, two, two thousand fifteen's gonna be overstated a little bit, isn't it? Uh, because we have pushed those textbook purchases into fifteen. So, it would give you a little bit more of a consistent trend. I'd like to jump around just a little bit, and there's a section, uh, Forecast Compared. And if you take a look at that on your copy rather than the screen, if you prefer, it's actually page twenty-three. And here's what this is telling us, basically. In October, you made a forecast for two thousand fourteen, and today we're making one based upon, we have more data. There's a lot of data, of course, we have a lot of cash flow activity, and this includes cash flow, actual cash flow through April. And so where do we see things ending at the end of June, just in two more months? This is what we're projecting today. And if you look at the blue-tinted line, seven, for example, on revenue, we're showing an additional five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue. And at the same time, if you look down at line thirteen, you'll see that we're projecting that expenditures will come in about one point four million less. We already know one of those items, and that's the textbooks that we're deferring into two thousand fifteen. I have prepared a narrative for you here that shows that, uh, a little bit of decrease in property tax collections, you did reduce your levy addition, but we also saw that prior year delinquencies were down, uh, in this settlement. So that explains our reduction there. And when you look at state funding, if you look at the two combined, both restricted and unrestricted funding, those are up about four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars over the October estimate. And then the next noticeable line refers to the one-time revenue that I mentioned. And that's non-operating revenue, was up about five hundred and seventy-three thousand in care, I believe that was Bureau of Workers' compensation, and it was also...
And the RIA, um, assessment fee from the county auditor where the open company went out.
Yes, okay, thank you. So those are one-time revenue sources that weren't counted on in October, obviously. On the expenditure front, we're seeing the salaries coming in lower than projected here in October. Fringe benefits slightly higher. Uh, you can see the nine hundred and one thousand less for supplies, debt, capital outlay. That has to do in part with that deferral into two thousand fifteen. And so, our net this year is close to two million dollars better than what was projected in October. And by the way, I did adjust, the revenue does include the renewal levy that was being reserved back in October, so we've got an apples-to-apples comparison there. This trend continues on out as you look, I also included a page. I don't have comments on it, but some of this will be just a continuation. As you look at two thousand fifteen, if your two thousand fourteen salary basis is lower, you certainly would expect that to continue into two thousand fifteen. So you'll see some of the line items are continuing into fifteen with, uh, the reduction there. Fringe benefits is actually lower, even though the basis in two thousand fourteen was higher because there's a, uh, health insurance premium came in lower than what the district had originally projected back in October. So, that explains why that reduction is there. And then now you'll see the increase in supplies, debt, and capital outlay as a result of some of that deferral. So that just gives us a good basis of two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. Where were we, where are we today, uh, and how are things trending? And actually, when you look at two thousand fifteen, you'll see that they're trending comparable to the two thousand, or the October estimates. Mr. Strasser?
Yes.
Um, did you, we, we, one billion lower in personnel, or one point two? Did, were you able to, one point one billion in salaries? Were you able to put a finger on, on why that is?
I know, I know why that happened. It was actually when we first started, um, looking into it. Um, we had, um, the previous five-year allocated, the, um, EPC buyouts, for some reason, in the salary line. If you look at the assumptions, um, the EPC buyouts were up there versus in the two hundreds. So that's why you can see that the salaries are off, and then the retirement, or the benefit's off because they were in the wrong line from the previous forecast.
So it's kind of a swap.
It's a, it's a partial swap, yes.
Yeah, it's a partial swap.
The, the EPC in two thousand fourteen, I believe, is, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then has the second EPC started as well?
Um, yes, this is the last year for the two thousand and eleven buyout, and you'll see that one fall off, and we're in year one as well. Uh, the new buyout, that will go through fifteen. It's thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. So, we're actually, the one's falling off, so then that will, that, we had to back that one out, and then we still have the other one that we just started that will continue the next couple of years.
Well, I think we need to give a little credit to our HR department and all the principals for selecting some highly qualified people, but not paying outrageous prices. Even though there are times, I think we need to pay more for certain positions. Overall, very nice job, especially the people who do that.
It's a good, very good possibility.
And that is very hard to estimate, and, uh, you don't, you don't know who you're going to hire exactly. You shoot for trends. And I see this in a lot of districts where, uh, those savings, you know, can come in that because of those retirement replacements. I think you had, uh, thirty retired replacements plus four that you didn't replace. And all of that is back for him to do. I don't think that, I mean, obviously, a million dollars is a lot of money. When you look at the fringe benefit, salary line items together, we're in the nine hundred thousand dollar range on thirty-three million dollars, and you did have a lot of new targets. Not only did you have the items that were just mentioned, but you've made some pretty significant changes. You brought preschool back in the salary, so there was an attempt to estimate that. At the same time, two years ago, you moved subs out. Those are all okay things, it's just that they're harder when you have inconsistency to track.
When we compare versus October, though, it seems like most of that hiring would already be in place, and that October forecast would, we didn't do that much hiring since October, right?
I don't think the October forecast was nearly as thorough as this, not even far. I don't think that, that's much worth to start off. I mean, they really went through this forecast a big time.
I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on the revenue side and then on the expenditure side. I think it's very important for you as board members to understand how the state funding is working for you because it has generated additional revenue for your district. And so we need to take a look at that, and there are two areas that I'm going to refer to. We do have on the notes themselves... Page ten, foundation and restrictive funding. At the top of this, you'll see some of the key components that go in determining your funding. And a huge piece of this, obviously, is enrollment. And you'll see the enrollment estimates that we're using, as well as valuation per pupil, which is driven by valuations and the number of students. And if you look at this enrollment, I want you to keep in mind that this is funded enrollment. So this does include the children who are resident children, who are going to community school or enrollment or other places. So as that tuition moves with those students, uh, they will be included in this count of funding for this. Okay? A huge takeaway here is that, I think all of you have probably heard, that state funding provides five thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars per student. The state's share of that for Springboro is thirty-nine point three percent. And so they are generating, in this formula, two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That may or may not surprise you. Uh, I think it surprises me when I think of it in context of your receiving additional money. And I, my takeaway from that, and the goal of it, is that the formula wasn't working so poorly for you before that this formula, that seems a bit more logical, and it's actually very linear in terms of how it ranks districts closest to ours, and determines that state share. So, I can't promise you that I'm right on that piece, but let's say the funding formula wasn't working up until now. Agree or disagree with this funding formula like or not like, this funding formula is generating per pupil amounts. That certainly is higher than in the past, okay? So, your core foundation funding, uh, is almost eleven and a half million dollars in two thousand fourteen. And then all other state revenue includes other pieces, uh, that are restricted. Some of it's restricted, some of it will be special education, some of it will be like, for example, casino revenue. These are all included in these line items, and they have been in the past as well. So you can already see as we take a look at the picture that we're seeing that bump and increase in two thousand fourteen and fifteen. Most board members, most superintendents are comfortable with that piece, but I think we need to understand what this formula is actually generating for your district because it's important for you to have a comfort level through that understanding as to why we believe that this state funding level is supportable, is affordable. And yes, you'll see that for our recommendation to you, that we actually have growth continuing through the forecast period. So, we have a page, uh, that is state funding supplement. It's a lot of data, it's gonna be very hard for people to read, especially in the back. And even if you have the handout, it's a little bit hard to read because of the small print, but it's a high test at the same time. But there's a lot of good data on here that helps you to understand this formula and its response to your, uh, your district's demographics. First of all, in column A, you'll see that we do have your enrollment increasing slightly over time. This is primarily because of mobility in, uh, that we're still seeing some growth back into the district. We're also seeing that, uh, your, your graduating classes, while larger than your kindergarten classes, there's not a huge variance, like we see in some districts where six hundred kids are leaving and only three hundred are coming in. And so we see reasonably stable, uh, enrollment. And then in the next column, we have projected your valuations for this forecast period along with the states. One of our business partners is, uh, Mike Silver, he used to work for the High Department Taxation. Did those estimates for the state? We have compared our estimates relative to the state of Ohio as a whole. What does it tell us? Your valuation, your, um, local wealth to tax is about eleven percent, eleven point four percent greater than the state median. So you're not at the high end of the wealth spectrum there. That isn't helping you to generate the funding that you're generating in the forty percent range. There's another test that doesn't help you, but it also doesn't hurt you. And the other test is median income, because there are districts in the state that have a high per pupil valuation, but have no local tax capacity to pay taxes on that valuation this quarter, their school district. In other words, their, uh, taxpayer income is below the median. In your case, the district is almost two times the state median on income, and so... And so this formula is saying, we're not going to hurt you for that, but we also aren't going to help you like we are about 50 or 80 districts that's in that range in Ohio that are receiving additional benefit because of their low taxpayer income. This gives you the demographics of your community. It leads us to the wealth index, which then leads us to the state share. You can see how consistent your staying relative to the state. This means that your per pupil wealth, which is all that's used to rank you, is staying very consistent relative to the state. Even though we have valuations increasing, you've got a slight increase in student enrollment that will help keep that per pupil amount pretty consistent. You can see that, and at the same time, the actual per pupil amount stays pretty consistent as well, doesn't it? We do have a little bit of growth. We do see, by the way, and I don't want to overextend my welcome with respect to the state revenue and understanding of the formula, but this is reset every two years. So what we're experiencing now will be set through next school year and then they'll revisit your wealth ranking and then they'll do it again in the next biennium after that. My biggest takeaway from this for you as board members is this. We have analyzed this a couple of different ways to figure out whether or not this state funding formula will continue to work for you and how does that influence your forecast. In 2014, how many of you have heard of the funding cap? That the state only allows you to increase a certain percentage? That cap is withholding $5.2 million that this formula is calculating for you and your student base and your demographics. So if they hadn't had the cap, if they had the money to pay all of it, they would have written a $5.2 million bigger check this year to Springfield Schools. So what are they doing with that? What we're modeling for you is what I'm calling an unstressed, and I'll explain that in just a moment. What we actually believe your valuations and your per pupil valuation will be, we're showing that actually the unfunded amount will stay in the $4 million range throughout this forecast period. Now, why is that happening? First of all, we're using their caps in 14 and 15. See the 10 and a half percent there? Next year, they're actually allowing you to get a 10 and a half percent increase and they will still owe you $4.4 million. Going forward, we're recommending to clients in your condition, in your situation, to model anywhere from 2 to 4% cap because we believe that, first of all, the state's formula does owe you money. Any increase in state funding at the statewide level will go into the formula. And so those with unfunded formula will benefit. The state's not had this, certainly not in recent years. Most of the time, it's because they are actually giving districts money that the formula isn't generating for them through the guarantee. And so in your case, we see that you'll stay pretty stable here, that 2% increases are very defendable in light of this unfunded formula. Now, the switch of that is some districts saying, well, why wouldn't you model 10%? That's what they're doing next year. I don't think that that's realistic. There's nothing in our history that shows that the state has consistently increased funding to any school district, 10% a year without enrollment increasing, that is. And so I think that you need to stay in that range. Keep it in perspective. Budget talks will start before you know it. And by next March, 15%, we'll be seeing the next budget and what they intend to do. But we have put some growth in there. We have stressed this as well. One of the things that's not in this forecast is any further increase in your public utility valuations. We've had experience with that. We've told your administrative team that we'll help to garner information on that and so that we can have an understanding. But I will tell you that we have basically increased the public utility personal property valuation, which are the gas transmission lines, by the same amount that they were increased in 2010 or 11 range to see what would happen. We also increased, because you are seeing again, you saw inflation in 2012 on residential housing. It was around 5.4%. And you saw, I'm sorry, that was around 1.9%. And in the first six months of 13, we saw right around 5%. We went ahead and bumped up because you'll go through a reassessment by the county in 2015. We went ahead and bumped that up 8% just to see what would happen. With both of those pluses, which would certainly improve your wealth ranking, make you wealthier, you still had $2 million in unfunded formula. So we feel pretty confident that this unfunded formula will work for you. Any questions on that?
Yes. Is that unfunded formula amount modeled with them? You know, we're showing $4 million potential increase in 2015, but it looks like the, I'm not seeing where that is.
No. Here's, Mr. Rigada, here's what is capping that. We have capped it at 2%. Our recommendation to clients is that, just like you have $5 million now, they didn't let you have all of it and they didn't let you have all of it next year either. Will the cap in all likelihood be, if the state economics continue where they are and they're able to put any additional funding into education in the next biennium? Could this cap be higher than 2%? Yes. I think it's like revenue, it's like revenue you could potentially get that's in the bank. Do you think that they'll increase it, allow you to increase 5% a year for three years? I don't believe so. I think that we'll see a more modest cap going forward. So we do not have $4 million in additional revenue. We have $4 million in revenue that they're withholding from you.
They owe us, but we won't. It would take several, several years at the levels over there for us to ever recoup that money from the state. So we can't really put in our five-year that we're going to give all of it because there's no evidence to ever show that would ever happen. I mean, 10 and a half percent is actually pretty shocking that we even weren't doing that much.
Right. We got the 10 and a half percent bump, what, this last year?
No, it actually is going to be coming for next year. We got a 6.5% this year.
And then we're going to get the 10 and a half next year. Is that 10 and a half programmed in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And even though that is the current state of the law, current state of the law says the cap's going to be 10.5%.
The current state of the law says that for two years. It is not an extension. Any budget is for a two-year period of time. So they'll revisit that and reestablish caps each and every year.
If that were, quote unquote, entitled to, it's based on the funding formula.
It is.
And the funding formula that was put in law for two years. I thought that the, I understand that redo the budget every two years, but they don't redo the funding.
Let me ask this question. Are you suggesting to put a higher than 2% cap in there? Is that your, you would like to see that model? We certainly can do that.
I'm not, I'm not the one suggesting it. I'm trying to understand what we've got and why we've got it. And so I just wanted to be clear. The funding formula says we would get 5 million, 4 million, 4 million, 4 million, 4 million.
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's how much we will be owed. After we get the 6.5%, they'll still owe us that much. And after we get the 10.5%, which we are in our five-year, they'll still owe us that.
Yeah, I understand. That's how much they're shorting us based on the funding formula that is in law today. So unless they change the funding formula, they'll still owe us that. The current cap is 10%. If they maintain that 10% cap, we won't get all that they owe us, but we will get 10% more.
Yes, we will get a lot more.
But instead of that 10%, at least in 16, 17, and 18, you're modeling 2%.
That's correct.
And at some point, assuming, I mean, at some point, if we got, say we got 10%, 10%, 10%. At some point, we get all we're titled to and at that point.
The math is actually.
Unless something really changed, we would keep getting only that amount.
The math is actually here. If you, if you look at it, if we were allowed to get 10% on 12.9 million instead of 2%, then we would have nearly a million dollars additional funding. The cap, the unfunded cap would go down by a million dollars. And if you allow that every year, the unfunded cap would actually be exhausted, yes. I can't give you a crystal ball that they'll do fives or sevens or threes. But it's a moving dynamic. The stress test tells us that unfunded formula is here for you. It's not something, we have districts that are going up and down every year. And by the way, now that the guarantee is established at 2013's level, there are districts that will actually see reductions in funding next year. That has never, that hasn't happened in a very long time. And so we're trying to strike that balance between full disclosure of, we believe that you are a district that has unfunded formula. Would I model 10? Would I recommend to you model 10? No. Would I recommend in the range that we've been working with clients is 2 to 4 in where you are? And we'll look at it in October and see what the budget discussions are. Because it could very well be that especially, there's been a lot of talk about the need to revisit guarantees in a state funding. There's going to be winners and losers if they do that. Right now, the formula is showing that you would be a gainer in it.
Would it be fair to say that based on the way the funded formula is today and based on the way that funding is capped today, that you're being pretty conservative at 2% when the cap goes out here as a 2%?
Well, I don't know that it's being conservative because 2 to 4% is a normal range for the state when I look at it over time. Whether or not they're going to look at it, because it is a different set of circumstances, I just simply can't predict. But they would look at it and say, no, we're going to take money away from districts and we're going to allow this more modern work at a faster pace. That's just too speculative for me. I think the conservative part, if you want to use that language in this, we're trying to be realistic. The conservative part is in the fact that you do have unfunded formula. And my biggest takeaway is that at least I don't have to stand there before, there's a very good risk that you'll lose funding. So we just have to kind of look at that going forward and monitor which.
And I will just add to that. And in the October forecast, we were modeling zero increases. So we actually did add 2% across, which, you know, because we're able to see that that's, based on what we see now, that is at least likely, you know, to continue. But again, we don't have any idea on some new funding formula. And if the state's budget's even less and they start having to make cuts, they're not going to give us 10 and a half percent. We just don't know.
I agree with you that we don't know. But they changed the funding formula because they decided that this was a better model. We happen to be a beneficent here. But I think for years, because of the way they were doing it, and I don't know all the details on how they did it, but it wasn't based on the amount of pupils to rapidly grow in districts like ours, we got shortchanged. I think this formula is, if you will, kind of making up for all, I mean, we're not ever going to recover what we did get in the fourth, but at least now it's more per pupil based and we're getting what we should. In fact, by the formula, they owe us a lot, but they won't give it to us all because they think 10% enough. 10 and a half percent a year is enough.
Yeah, they can't afford to get under 13.3 million, which is why they do the cap.
Other questions on state funding that I could help with this evening? Those are the parameters that we put in there. Certainly up for you to also discuss and provide feedback. Those are our recommendations. I want to touch on real estate quickly for you as well. Again, we really don't engage in conservative forecasting. We try to be realistic with everything we bring to the table. You're going to see the major components of your local property taxes. And that is valuations, tax rates, and the collection rate. You have enjoyed in this community very high collection rates of taxes so that you're not growing into liquidities, for example. If you look at the first two columns, you'll see the year-over-year change in valuation in the second column per year. And here is where you will see the 2009 reduction that you experienced. You also had a reduction in 2008. The other, the next reassessment occurred in 2012. And you can see that going forward, in 13, you already had some new construction and growth in 13. 14, we're modeling similarly. And then in 15, we're modeling an increase in valuations due to the reassessment. Anytime you have an increase in valuations due to reassessment, what happens? The tax rates, they go down. The only gain that you'll have, and we certainly won't get into all of that tonight, but we'll be on Inside Village. And so we'll see your tax rates go down at the same time the valuations go up. And so that isn't a windfall of revenue from those tax rates. What my takeaway from this is, you've got a fairly stable situation. You're not like a lot of districts that are still experiencing up and down valuations. You've really seen to recover nicely, not robust, but you're more solid than a lot that we're seeing. And that is a very impressive gross collection rate, which is a combination of current taxes paid and prior year liquidities. That gives you a little bit of the basis that went into the real estate projections so that you hopefully have confidence in the revenue side of the formula. Let's take a look at some of the expenditures. For the forecast period, by the way, I should have mentioned that the pie chart that you have on revenue also shows an increasing share for the state relative to your local taxes. Okay, so they're becoming a little bit better partner in this process for you. If we take a look at expenditures over time, you'll see fluctuation here. For example, on salaries, you'll see that the five-year average for the forecast period is about 1%. It is 1%. And you'll see a reduction in 17. I have this in my notes below. That reduction in 17 reflects the expiration of a classified lump sum payments that are being made for three years. So there's a reduction in there of $212,000 and no other increases being modeled at the moment. So those, that's the basis going into the salary line item. You do have some increases for 14, 15. In 14, you're seeing that increases would have exceeded the 1.6%, but you've also had that huge amount of retirement that you had in place and replacement savings that Mr. Petrie mentioned that have offset that. So for the forecast period, about 1%, 2017 is actually a reduction because of that $212,000 reduction in classified salaries that's being modeled. In fringe benefits, you'll see also some up and down, which is not customary necessarily in a five-year forecast like this. But you have a second retirement incentive that Ms. Floyd mentioned just a moment ago that will expire in 17. So the third year of that payment will go off in 2017. So you're seeing that decline in fringe benefit costs. And that also goes back to the comment that this, that retirement incentive payment is being reflected in fringe benefits, not in salaries. As we look across at our purchase services, we've got a couple of things going on here that are, that are giving us some challenges. And I'm going to tell you right now that this has been the hardest line item for us to project. I could easily expect this line item to be off $250,000 in years' time. You have had a change in the way you're accounting for preschool. So we've tried to get that obviously, you know, brought forward for you to see. That involves in some cases, for example, Tara found that there were 2013 payments occurring in 14, 12 payments occurring in 13, and those kind of things, just delayed billing is all. And so we saw some of that going on. We also saw that in 2014 that we had an increase of $230,000 in tuition to other districts, to other types of providers, whether it's community schools or open enrollment. You are now hitting the 1.1, 1.2 million dollar range of dollars that are leaving your district and following those students.
So the $230,000 increase, that's people choosing to leave our district?
$230,000 worth of tuition is now going out and following students, resident students that have left the district?
Yes. That is one of the reasons we need much more oversight, especially in that area. Losing a lot of money from lack of oversight. Losing a lot of money from lack of oversight.
In 2015, the supplies are projected to go up. Remember, we talked about the textbook referral from 14 to 15. And in 15, you'll also see an increase for all other expenditures. This is not a big line item, but it includes, includes an increase for county out there in treasure fees. I believe they're returning back to previous levels of fee assessment and that sometimes generates money and then it's a refund. So, we have to project it at what they're saying that that is moving toward. Let's take a look at a couple of the details that we built for you. On salaries, obviously, you're clearly your largest line item. You're going to see that we have a little bit of staffing increase that Mr. Petry-Stein has given us. There's an additional staff person in 15, and then six additional staff FTE in 2016. So, that's been reflected in here. 14 reflects the 30 retire replacement savings and the four not replaced. There are, is an increase in here of 4 and 1/2% in 14 and 15 to cover increases in salaries that you have in place now. There are no increases for certified in 2016, 17, and 18. On the classified front, there's no change in FTE. There is, I've mentioned previously as well, there is the $212,000 that you're paying in 14, 15, and 16, which is a negotiated lump sum payment each year. And in 2015, there's a 2.5% overall increase for classified. Then in 16, 17, and 18, there is no increase and there's the reduction that I mentioned to you for 17 and 18 of $212,000 a year. 2014 also reflects the insourcing of preschools that you started this year. For fringe benefits, I broke this out so that you could see the health insurance component and the year-over-year change, so you can see the percentages being modeled as well as the dollar cost of those percentages. And then you can see what all other benefits look like as well. Tara has worked with a consultant to come up with estimates. You did end up with better than projected increases starting in October.
October.
And we've modeled that in here to reflect that. And that's, that's why some of this 4% is also bringing this down as well, because I think this was originally over 10% for next year.
10 and 1/2, 10 and 1/2, 10.25, and they went back and do their claims and we went back and it's actually a 10 and 1/2% increase, but because it's not happening until October, we will realize that we'll be a, in this, in that scenario. So, that's why it's at 10%.
Yeah, when they see a jump, I called them and talked to them, said significant increase. He said, we're already in the process of reviewing your district, because when we see a jump like that, it automatically goes into the review phase. Just for the community to know, we had an overuse in compared to other districts that look like us. And that's why in comparison, ours increased budget rate. Which, what people have to understand is, when we talk about hiring new staff, that's great savings. We also have to understand, we're hiring very young people who are going to have families. There's going to be more expense to our health insurance as a result.
Now, part of this is skewed and we're just getting started with you. We do a very detailed benchmark report and we'll go over that with you at different times. But we do use benchmarks as we go through this. We're going to have to do a little bit more work on your numbers, because we can see these retirement payment expirations occurring that are bringing down the year-over-year increases. But for example, we know in October, that the average in the state for this line item was 5.4% per year. So, districts were projecting fringe benefits increase about 5.4% per year. You can see clearly that you're under that. I think if we would pull out the impact of those retirement incentive payments expiring, which has produced these years, I think we would see under that benchmark of 5.4 and quite possibly right slightly under 5% per year in average annual increases. All of that's explained, not the 5.4%, but the retirement incentive payments and amounts are explained in the note below. And we've also added some additional, Mr. Petry, some additional insurance plans for the staffing as well, the changes that will be proposed there. For purchase services, you'll see, yes, sir?
So, on the medical insurance, the assumption is that we're not going to change the plan and that we're going to, the district is just going to absorb that, even though we have negotiations every, maybe every two years, depends on how long the contract would be. But contracts up in one more year, right? So, even though we're going to be negotiating, you know, the assumption is no changes in the plan and that the, what was it, the average 9% increase per year?
8.8%.
And that that's just going to happen?
Yeah. What it is, is, you know, obviously, when it's going to negotiate, everything we look at and we'll, obviously, we guess we can and negotiate what we have, it's just that we have nothing at all when we have the salaries, at all. So, if you, when you model nothing for salaries and nothing for benefit increases, that could make a huge change to the budget numbers. So, that's why I, you know, need to discuss with PDC and says, you know, what are the average increases? And that's what they gave us, the numbers of the average increases, and they do a whole trend and base it off how, what the average year of increases are. So, that's why those are in there. I mean, obviously, we will definitely negotiate whatever we can do, but you know, if we have nothing in there for salaries, it's probably not a good idea to have nothing in there for changes.
Well, right.
And the classified is through 17. So, the classified staff in the negotiating agreement, it states that we will pay up to 10% increase before we can go back to anything. So, at least for classified staff through almost the entire five year, we have to pay at least 10% before we can go back and negotiate.
Well, and right now, if you look at districts around us, we have the highest portion that the employees pay of any district around. I know there's five or six districts negotiating now, and I've gotten a lot of calls out in the world, that you get 80/20. And we're one of the, one of the few that have that. Plus, within that 80/20, our portions of the copayments and things that we have to pay are much higher than most, most other districts. So, and I realize that in private business, it may be a little bit higher, but at the same time, this is clearly not a high-paid profession. So, that is one of the things that we're looking at. And it is one of the things, when we want to be competitive in our market of education, makes it very difficult for us to be competitive.
We have something on competitive. As my intuition says, that's probably backwards, because I think that for pay-for-performance, we probably do need dollars in salary, because I don't think that we'd be, I'll get to, we can have a conversation later about why. I think that that's the case. But if you've got to keep your, just simply say, if we're going to keep our top performing teachers with the evaluation systems coming up and the competitive nature that there will be out there for those top performers, we're going to have to pay on performance and pay well for, for top performance, or somebody's going to steal them right out of the numbers. So, I, I fully expect that pay for performance is, is going to be a great thing salary-wise for our top performing teachers. But at the same time, as people in the community are dealing with just enormous insurance costs, they're going to expect some level of, I like to use the word parity, doesn't mean it's equal, but, and so, without getting too deep into words that might be streetless negotiating, I mean, I think that we have to push for more parity in insurance about this. And I think that generally, the public at large is more than willing to pay people for, who are top performers, top salaries. I mean, I.
So, are you suggesting that you do the research in the primary?
Well, I think that there probably ought to be some kind of an allowance for pay for performance changes. We don't know what those are, but.
We're one step ahead of you on that, is the next slide.
Just, just to touch on the concept, that's not necessarily right or wrong. Our job is to present to you a trend that already your forecast shows is unsustainable. Someone else may argue that capital is unsustainable. Our job is to show you that if the trends aren't perfect, and it's often times for board members to ask that question. Well, this is the way we're doing it. It doesn't mean you're doing it. These are the trends that you're faced with and you'll make decisions each and every year, just as you go through negotiations. One of the things that this potentially is used for as well, we do need a benchmark for where you're at and where you're going and how you're planning prepares, or at least I believe you do. And I think your employees need the information to be able to make good decisions, that should we be spending money this way and should it be this way? Those are all things that you see as a result of this. And it would be the same that would be in here for every single assumption. We didn't put them there, you wouldn't be able to see that, quite frankly, it's not sustainable without additional revenue at some points. And so, those are the questions you have to ask. And you would never see that or know that without at least showing what the trends look like and what your consultants said increases would be.
Since I, since I started the topic, I do want to explain that pay for performance thing really good, because I don't know how long, but here's what I think is going to happen with the evaluation systems that are out there. I mean, these teachers are going to end up in rankings. And if you're a school district that has money and you have openings, I think this common sense says that you may go after some of those top teachers. And if you have money and you want to hire that top talent, you'll pay for it. And I think the free market is just going to, once these evaluations come out there, I think the free market is just going to take over here. And if, if we don't have a salary structure that protects our top performers, somebody out there will put that in place and they will pay them. And we'll be, we'll be behind the curve. And so, I think right now, we're potentially ahead of the curve, because we're here talking about this with our union. And I just, I just think that it's important that we get something like this in place so that we protect our top talent.
Well, but keep in mind though, people are attracted to a package that includes benefits as well. I mean, if Ms. Floyd came on, from what she had a love of, even though she makes more money here as treasurer, she makes very little more a month because of how little of insurance that we pay in comparison to other districts. So, it, it goes hand in hand in terms of, if you raise one and not the other, you're raising this to pay for one. So, it's, they're looking at both. That's, that is the market. Education has a market. I know some people don't like that, but education has an industry of what the packages are.
No, no doubt about it. There's a delicate balance there, but, yeah, I, I just wanted to explain the pay for performance concept and a little bit, you know, maybe a little bit, promiscating a little bit into the future.
We do have Mr. Petry ask us to model, what if there was a pool of money? What would that at least look like so you can see it in, in affordability factor? And maybe if you look at pluses and minuses and benefits, I'm a little bit dandy, Mr. President, because I'm not wired for electric, my battery's going quick. So, I'll try to get through at least what I need this quarter and then perhaps try to help on other fronts. But the, the modeling of that pool of dollars, whether you look at these dollars with it or not, will give you some idea of the affordability issue and some of the challenges that you face as you modelers. Because we did put a what-if together. If what in 2015, 16, 17, you just modeled a 2% amount of money that was available somewhere. And again, we're not in negotiations, but if there was a 2% pot of money available to negotiate with, with respect to performance, Mr. Petry asked us to put this together. And we did model it. And you can see with, from a benchmark, this is where you are today. Apologize for the bluriness there. But you can see that cash balance looks familiar, it's no different, just a different type of graph. And you can see that we are trending toward, even with this benchmark and even with the $212,000 reduction in classified pay in 2017, you can see that we're heading toward expenditures exceeding revenue where we are now. Of course, if you pull fringe benefits out, it's going to close that gap a little bit by about $280,000 or so. That can come closer and certainly would help a little bit on the cash balance, too. What happens if you do model in 16, 17, 18, that pool of money to be allocated, however you negotiate and determine somewhere in the road? And you can see the impact of that. You're now heading toward, and unless, it's nice to look at the gold line and the cash balance, you already know what's happened. You're spending one-time money on an ongoing cost potentially. And you can see that the revenues, the expenditures are more out of balance. I think those are great discussions for you to start to have as you work within what you really have here, whichever district has, which is one of the resources. I will tell you that a number of districts are trying to get their, their head around that idea of performance and how to deal with that and how you're looking at that in their, not only in their forecasts, is this is just a what-if? I mean, if you told us to give you a finished product that had 2% in there, we certainly could do it. Many times, districts just want to see it in a what-if environment to know the impact that on their overall.
Mr. Stolzer, if I may, if we discussed a 60-day carryover, basically, that's what you should have to function properly in the district. Some districts do 30 days. $6.8 million would be a 60-day carryover for us. That's 2.7 million when you look at the 2% for performance-based pay. When, in our research, looking at performance-based pay, and feel free to go out there, all the research points that you spend more money when you do performance-based pay than you do a set salary schedule. You spend more money. So, we're looking at it. Lakota's done a ton of work in this and one of the OEA people bringing that, they hired a private consultant. Colorado has some big things in it. Jim, you've looked at that. So, we're going to have a lot of different options to look at. But it all comes down to one thing. It's a trust between Board of Education and employees of we're all on this working in the same, in the same direction. So, that's a huge factor.
Well, I, hey, I, I have, while I don't like continuing contracts, I have no problem paying people for their performance. And so, you know, I think it will, the competitive market will play this out, as I mentioned. But I think that it will be very competitive for those top teachers. I think it will be very competitive. I see, I see them making six inches. I really do. Maybe not, maybe not the first couple of years that performance-based starts, but they're, I see salaries they have to see.
The executive summary, it's one page, one page, and it shows you a little bit different graph than you'll see in most forecasts. And you'll see that you're really front-loading some of your expenditures here for capital outlay and supplies and materials. Some of those, as part of your plan, are intended to reduce in later years. For example, textbooks will be in the $500,000 range here as additional expenses were, you know, were measured here. So, what we can see, though, is in every year, the expenditures exceed the revenue that's available. And what impact does that have on the district's cash reserves? We've given you a couple of different benchmarks. Mr. Petry mentioned one. I did take the liberty to do this just a little bit differently. We looked at your 2013 actual expenditures and average month is 3.7 million. So, if we looked at two months as, and I'm not saying that this is your reserve policy, I think that Ms. Floyd can take you through a, a good process, will help however we are needed to work with you on developing what should a cash balance be at this district, if it is the 60 days and if it is the 60 days. But the more that you can explain that as a board member and people understand that we actually have monthly cash flows, that you can see the dip that occurs when you're waiting on real estate taxes, people begin to understand that this is a large operation and it needs a certain amount of cash on hand to continue and be stable. Let's look at where we are in 2016. That is what we call an interim forecast period. We believe that it's the highest level of reliability in terms of our assumptions. We certainly believe that 17 and 18 show you trends, but we believe just, Mr. Rigano, with example, with respect to the cap, it could be a 5%. And so, that could be, that would be additional revenue. We certainly can model that. That's exactly why we look at this interim period first and then look at our extended trends. In 2016, you're expected to be spending approximately $46 million. We're projecting your cash balance to be approximately $7.4 million at that time. You can see what 10% of your budget compared to that as a benchmark. You can see what 10% of your budget compared to that as a benchmark, an average month's expenditures. You can also see, for example, what, this is one we use in a common way, what one month's tax collections look like, because that's a common stress that happens where tax collections are delayed a bit because of tax billing delays or those kind of things. We need a little bit more work, I think, in terms of, of being able to really articulate these numbers and what is important to you and the stability that you're striving for in that cash balance. But this gives you an idea of a snapshot of 2016 with the assumptions that are being modeled here. At this point, I think that you have additional meetings scheduled where you actually consider approval for that. We certainly can work with you in terms of any other modeling that you need to do. If in that short period of time, you find an opportunity to come to close your own on other items, we can include that as well. The May forecast is an update and of course in October, we'll be rolling that forward and you'll see 2019 on there as well. So any other questions with respect to the forecast?
Well, I'd just like to thank you and I'd like to thank Tara. Tara gave you all the information to input the amount of time you guys spent planning and then pulled John and I and Tammy and Lee and greatly appreciate it. Feel very good about this forecast. I hope the community does as well.
Thank you. Well, you guys, you're great to work with and Tara is an incredible worker and just is, before you, as soon as you ask a question, I wonder why purchase, it's not like she's gone and going to my meetings and so really need to work with you guys. Thank you very much for the opportunity. We appreciate the work and we hope that we are searching worthy of working with you and provide the information on how to make some better decisions.
One final question. Is this a zero-based budget where it was built from, say, the roots up? Or is this based on projections?
Big time zero-based budget. As a matter of fact, in this budget, we have only allotted 50% startup from the fees, from the money that they spent last year. So they had to build a needs-based list. So we took the other 50% that was given because the money that's been given for materials over the last three years is incredible. We now have a zero-based line. So if they go outside of that budget, they will have to put in a request to take money out of the zero-based fund. That's the way that we're pushing the zero-based needs-based budget and getting away from. Well, I've just always bought 50 reams of construction paper. I'll do it again. No. Why do you need it? We need to understand this. So we have pots of money in there and Tara and I put into place that the operational has to be approved by me and then she goes and looks and she approves all the money. So then we put some serious things in place on that.
May I ask that you send copies of those zero-based summaries? Send those summaries out to the board?
Absolutely.
I'll have all those sent to you here. Do you have a version?
We'd actually have a budget file.
And they actually, it's totally, you would make a link, actually write what on every one of them. We definitely give them others to, we have the textbook options and they can walk in and they're able to be easy to do with. This is great. It's a great library.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
There we are.
I apologize for burning your battery down. I appreciate your time very much.
I know, my battery's going to be down.
Tara?
All right. Thank you. Thank you again. So Tara, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, I would like to go. And the mission and vision process that we discussed so much in March and April is now underway with a lot of work being done in the last couple of weeks and in forms of, in terms of an update to you tonight. On one hand, there's a lot of information to share with you about what's already been accomplished behind the scenes. And then on the other hand, there's a lot to tell you about what is yet to come. And we're sort of at this very exciting moment in that our first public community meetings are next week. So we really are at a transition point in the process itself. To tell you what we have been working on, sort of behind the scenes, or at least in terms of putting all of the different pieces in place to make this a successful process for you, for our district, for the community, that includes everything from scheduling, the details of where are we going to hold these meetings, trying to make sure that we are out in our community, but also not spending our resources. So I do want to mention the Kaufman Y is providing us with facilities free of charge as, as part of our partnership with them and also Clear Creek Township Government Center. And some of our meetings are here in our schools. So, and we'll continue to do that, but that covers our meetings through the summer. So we had that part of it, just the logistics of scheduling all the places, the times. Then we have the issue of inviting leadership, inviting community leaders into our, what we call, what we define for you as the stewards committee. And that stewards committee was, is designed to be representative of the diversity of views in our community, meaning if any member of our community were to walk into one of our meetings, they could look around that room and say, okay, I see someone that, that looks like me, that sounds like me, that shares my life experience. Maybe they don't know that person, but the idea is that that stewards group is a microcosm of our larger community. So that when we meet with them, it's a preview of our questions of how we will run those large-scale community meetings. It's also an opportunity for them to tell us how we're doing and to formulate some conclusions about the data as we go through these community meetings and we record everything coming out of them. And that's been going on, as you know, for quite some time. We've invited somewhere around 40 to 45 individuals, most of whom have accepted that invitation to join us. And about 20 joined us last week at Clear Creek for our first stewards meeting. And at that meeting, we got a lot of work done and I think people saw that this really was a community-driven enterprise in that I didn't talk very much, Todd didn't talk very much, the facilitator didn't talk very much. It was the community that got to speak. And that was a preview of the things to come. One of their larger concerns, and it was interesting, but something that many of them are very concerned about was the name stewards. And I'm nodding back there to Mrs. Benjamin, among others. And they, they wanted a name that represented the process, that represented the community, perhaps one that would look good on a T-shirt or something, you know, that would be catchy and memorable. And we have moved through the process, calling this Many Voices and Mission and Vision. So on both fronts, we have this idea of MVP. And so that stewards group is now referred to as the MVP group and this is the MVP process, Mission and Vision, or Many Voices, depending on which title you prefer. That Many Voices logo has been designed. It's very simple graphic. It works well in social media. I'll pass these over to you and take a look at it. Photocopies in black and white. The color version has a little bit of blue and gray on it. Just reflects the diversity of the community, the number of voices. It says one school district, many voices, one future. So that reminder that anyone can come and be involved in this and be involved in shaping a long-range view of our community and education's role in our community. The other work being done ahead of time before we launch these community meetings is on the communications end, similar to putting together the logo, was also just getting the word out about these meetings. So I want to share with you, our next district postcard should be arriving in mailboxes within the next couple of days. I'll pass those down here. You guys would like to see them? One side of the postcard features technology information about our district, highlights the 1.1 million dollar investment in technology and many of the great things being done in our classrooms with that investment just this year. We sort of look at the pictures here and see the full spectrum. We see the kindergartners with their tablets, all the way through high school students. And I like these pictures very much. It's a traditional look at education with the modern technology incorporated into today's classrooms. So gives our community a look, an informative look at some of the investments we've made this year and what's going on in our school. And then on the other side is information about these community meetings. The first ones, again, I said already was, the first ones are Wednesday, May 14th. We meet in the morning at the Kaufman YMCA and in the evening at Clear Creek Elementary. Just over a month later, this time on a Monday, Monday, June 23rd, we meet in the morning at Strittenburg High School. We'll be in the library that day. And then in the evening, again, at the Kaufman Y. And then Tuesday, August 5th, starting off in the daytime at the Kaufman Y and in the evening at the Clear Creek Township Government Center. Following that, staff convocation will be our next meeting after that to ensure that we involve our entire staff in this process. So that will be part of their convocation activities, will be the participating in the process. And then at that point, we'll be bringing you information. We'll be bringing you that report from this first phase and it would then fall on you to decide whether or not we proceed into the fall phase of, of this effort to engage with community. And the second phase would be that vision, that long-range vision for education in our schools. So that's everything that's been going on to get ready for this. And now it's yet to come. Hearing from our community beginning next week and at least monthly thereafter. I should also mention our MVP stewards committee meets Monday evening, this Monday evening at Central Office at 7:00 PM and you're all just welcome to that. I believe the board representation on that is Mr. Anderson and Mr. Patrani. But we would love to have you, any of you there. In fact, we've mentioned this in our school newsletter for the last two weeks and individuals have emailed me and asked to be added to that team. So we're watching that team grow really every day. I don't see that team being shut down. I don't see us closing it off, reaching a magic number and saying, okay, that's it, we're good. I think as long as people want to participate in the process, we're going to welcome them to the room and we want to hear their voices.
Helen, I'd like to say, one takeaway for me, which, of course, going into this, kind of holding the breath, pray it all works out, but I think people walk away seeing. This is about really looking into the future. This isn't about what's going to happen next year, the year after, what we need to buy or which book. This is all about building a set of skills in our students that the way that we teach them prepares them for what, whatever life ahead of them in the next 10 to 20 years. So I think there's a video that, that starts this, that Karen and I spent a lot of time on finding that. And they, I think, I think they were nicely surprised basically of what this is all about. It's, it's broad. It's a very broad, but it's what we need. It's what our kids deserve. I'll be here to see how this, this comes out. But we need more people, more than married. All I can say is the 20 that came out was more than I've ever seen at a school meeting. So I was happy about that, but we start with the silver sneakers and the Y next week. So we did want people to get out and have their voice heard. And when we meet with staff, we're probably going to have as a baseline what the community has said. And that's in essence where the staff is going to start, which is the complete opposite of what's been done here in the last 20 years. So, you know, if you can talk this up, it'd be greatly appreciated so that we can really move our kids into the next century.
Right now, there is information on all the meetings right on our homepage. We will be adding a whole segment to the website about this process and that's where we'll be posting the links to those videos, information on our meetings and, and resources. So if you wanted to keep up on the process along the way, see reports and so on, you're going to be able to do that online. You have a question, Phil?
Thank you, Karen. You have a question? You know I have a question. Are all of these sessions the same? So if somebody goes to one session, is there a point going to another session?
The only things that are going to be identical, at least from the starting point, are on the same days. So meaning if you could only come to one meeting on the 14th, that's great, but we are going to use the information then from the 14th. What we hear from the community then shapes the next round of questions. And we're not predetermining very much of this at all. We have some videos, we have some open-ended questions and then really wherever the community discussion leads us, that then leads us into the next meeting. So if you're looking at May 14th, June 23rd and August 5th, we will probably have very different discussions on each of those days, all related to our beliefs and our expectations about education. But we expect that those will change based on what the community tells us.
Yeah. Well, I guess it's too early to ask you how participation has been. I'm just looking at the dates. I know my personal schedule, I would have trouble making, but one of those sessions. But if people are available, come on different dates.
Yes, absolutely.
So if you come on May 14th, it's okay to come again on June 23rd and August 5th because there'll be different material.
Yes. But we also hope that at least if folks can make it to any one of them, then we, we have heard from them as part of this first phase of the process.
Hey, item 10.4?
Yes, and this will be quick. I have provided a board agenda example for you. Basically, that moves work session to the beginning of the board meeting. Would like to bring that back to potentially get that voted. This is linked to a, another policy in terms of how the policy is written. A lot of times we will say we need to have one meeting a month and then the guidelines follow how that meeting is going to look. So what this would be able to do, the city does it this way, most places you see will do it this way. It allows you to get the information and make decisions when it's fresh on your mind. Compared to how we're doing it now, you're waiting two weeks and then when we go to vote, we're discussing it all over again and we're trying to do the men, the voice memos so that we can ignite that, that memory as well. But hopefully what this will do is allow it to be in the work session. And if by chance you feel that you need more information, then we'll just put it off for the next two weeks if it be taken. Things will probably be tabled more during this way, but for us, from the standpoint of we'd be able to get things, then get them approved faster and quicker. So that is a part of this as well.
I think everybody was in agreement last time that we're going to go to the shot.
Helen, I'll bring that for a vote for the next week. Check the board.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we try it informally. I have reservations about the work session being first, but I'm willing to try it. And I would suggest that we just try it informally and just let it go about time change costs. This won't be a fine line, so. Just, just the way it is.
Is it my coffee? I just wanted to take an opportunity to update everyone. We, we've been working diligently and I did provide for you a basic grid, if you will, of what we've been working on as far as the textbooks and evaluation and presentations and looking at various textbooks. And gosh, what, what I think I want to ask you to do is just kind of take a look, just a glance, if you would, at the date of previous adoptions. And it's, it's this sheet of paper right here that has the grid. And one of the things I wanted to do is just kind of update you as to where we're at in the evaluation process for this school year, not necessarily for anything beyond. And if you can see, and one of the things I want to kind of point out, if you will, is the fact that we have some textbooks that we're currently using that are very dated. And with that being said, we've worked very hard to focus our efforts on language arts, math, world languages, and any particular course that, that we have considered and or added in our new courses study, which is stated at the bottom. But I guess I wanted to point out that I feel very happy about the fact that we are moving forward in our world languages and providing those textbooks, hopefully this school year with, with the approval. We are updating you just basically on the fact that we have kind of processed through looking at various companies. We've had opportunities to work with and provided nights and evenings and, and sometimes day-long opportunities for parents and/or community members to stop in and, and have conversations about the materials. So we feel right now that we've kind of worked through the process and, and sharing kind of where we're at right now and updating you on, on that process with the hopes that we will, next board meeting, have some basic synopsis of each one of those particular recommendations for your review and then at that point in time, consideration for adoption at our June, June board meeting. So just kind of trying to update you on where we're at. And again, focuses on language arts, math, world languages, AP Physics B and AP Psychology. I know it's small print and I apologize for that, so I hope you can, you see that. Any questions at this point? It's basic update as to where we're at.
If I may, are some of these the Pearson electronic books?
Correct.
In last meeting, we talked about getting a web address or access so that parents could... so that parents could review those and board members could review those.
Correct. And we talked with Chris last night. We had a parent meeting here at the high school. And he is going to provide that, as well as we're working on surveys, student surveys and parent surveys, that they can provide their feedback as well. And that should be, actually, that should happen pretty much immediately.
Wonderful. So will we get notice of password and everything? Some kind of a distribution of some kind of universal login that everybody can use those?
Correct.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And next, it should be pretty short. We've been talking about our waiver days. We've come to the conclusion that there are four days that work within the schedule and work within the criteria that we have presented. And with that being said, our four days that we would like to present and or get approval for are October sixth, November tenth, January twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, April thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. And those days are on Mondays. And as mentioned earlier, in our board meeting, we had suggested and said that we would not have delayed starts for this upcoming school year in exchange for those four days. There is one day per quarter that we are requesting your approval for. Any questions?
Questions?
Thanks for all your work, Karen. I've put a little time in all this thing we're doing. I hope that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten point seven?
I have an audio proposal for a summer school program that we want to run at Dennis for the intervention. And I have to say tonight that asking to change that proposal that I put in, it will now only be done at Dennis and it will only be for the Title I students at Dennis. With us, so we would not be using any general funds.
Would you want to bring that for a vote next week?
Yes, if I may.
Next board meeting?
Next board meeting? Tammy, will you go with that?
We'll do that.
Thank you. So, ten point eight?
Ten point eight. You received a video recording. A lot of fun doing that. And we are leaving the two people in the human resource department, Mandy and myself, are looking at purchasing PeopleWorks. At the present time, we have a spreadsheet for every system that we have. For example, seniority. So that we have all these dates of when the people were hired, how many years, their departments, and all of those things. For example, that took her three full days to go through that spreadsheet and contact the union, because we have to verify between each other, you know, the rate of seniority. When people retire, you have to take them off, and they leave, you take them off, things like that. So this way, it's going to put all of the systems that we have to track our employees all together into one system. And for example, we have the retirement dinner or the convocation. What we can do is, we can actually, it allows us to do mail serves. It is just going to unify our department in order to run it faster and have less human error, because all of that would be put into this one system. So I'm hoping you had time to kind of look over the information. We can email certain employees about certain things. For example, if their fingerprints are overdue. Instead of her having to manually go through a regular spreadsheet, she can just hit a button and it will all pull up all those names and boom, it goes off. So I'm hoping that you will give this consideration. At this point in time, we have been bringing in a substitute administrative assistant to help with on the days that we have fifty, sixty fingerprints, plus FMLA and all of those other things that we do. So I do believe in the end it will be cost-effective also. But mostly, it will be time efficiency that we will be increasing, so.
Well, to add to that, when we take field trips, all of our parents that are Chevron have to be fingerprinted. So there is a lot of backend work on some of these things. Do we pay for that, or did the parents pay for that?
They did.
They paid for that. So it locked up Lee's office of two people very quickly.
She doesn't trust me with the things. I could have way too much fun with that. Anyway, I will be bringing that. If you have any questions, hang on in the next board meeting.
We'll be fast.
I'm really looking forward to it. I didn't have to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you get your fingerprints checked? It did pass, right?
A couple years ago.
Ten point nine, John?
Senator Dine, this one's, we have administrative assistant de transportation. She currently is on a two-hundred-six-day contract, which limits the ability across the user during the end of the school year time and just before school starts. So what we're going to be asking for is an increase in contract days, fourteen days. That gives us another couple of weeks before our school starts and then a week after school ends to be able to use her to help close out the school year and start the school year. We just need some additional administrative support transportation from that.
If I could add to that, John, you only know that you just hit. We had our whole service system for transportation go down last year, about my first week here. And when we paid somebody big money to come out and fix that, they told me it has not been cleaned up for ten years. You overloaded the system.
Right.
And so when I talked to James, and he says, you're looking at a team of one meeting.
Yeah.
You just can't get all this done, because a lot of the private schools are still going to school there in summer. So we're providing transportation.
Correct.
So this will allow us that maintenance that needs to take place. And I can tell you what we spent to get that thing fixed will be a lot less than fourteen days for this person who will be there to help.
No, this is.
Liz.
All right. The next one's a little bit longer. Sorry. The technology RFQ, we did have four responses for that. Now that you know, last meeting, the four were. We really narrowed that down, looking at the RFQs and talking with Todd, to really two that kind of stood out, especially these two, Ford Edge and Full Service Networking, have very, they're large companies that have a lot of school districts currently under contract. So Todd and I went there yesterday and visited Forest Hills Turpin High School. And that's where Ford Edge has a contract. And that contract there, they do everything from network break, fix, support, all the way up to the technology education piece of it. And then we went from there over to Ursuline Academy and met with Full Service Networking, who does, you know, everything there for them in terms of technology. So we had a good look at them. The hardest part about the whole thing is that usually, when you do those things, one company rises above the other. But speaking without a take of it, when we left, we were just as equally convinced that both of them could meet our needs at when we started. So we need to do some more in-depth discussion about that, whether, you know, number one, are we going to do it? Number two, who are we going to go with? So my intent was to come back at the main twenty-second board meeting with the recommendation. That may or may not happen. It's going to have to depend on, as we go through this the next couple of weeks and try to finalize. One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to negotiate with both companies to develop a contract. The one, I forget her name, I forget every time. The one that's in our budget finance committee.
Laura Kovacs.
She's providing us some great input on doing those things, because that was her job for a long time. So she's going to be sending me an email with some things to add in and to talk to them about. And then we're going to sit down and look at what we want to do. One of the things that, whether we contract out or not, that we want to do, and we're going to be coming forward with something probably on the twenty-second, is we want to add another instructional, technology instructional person. Another Amy Roma's to the thing. Not exactly what Amy does, but she does a lot of things. But to push this technology forward in the classroom so that the teachers are comfortable using this technology in the classroom. And the ones that have worked directly with Amy and all have loved it. And there's a, we do have, you know, a couple of people in the district that are good at it also that we could, you know, look at inside the district. So that's one thing that, as we go through this process, we want to add anyway, whether it's when we contract or not. So we want to get that out there to you, that we want to add another person in that role to help us move the technology forward as we go.
And that was part of, when I presented last week, eight hundred seventy-six thousand dollar savings by going to technology base. Now, I mentioned then, there'll probably be two hundred thousand we actually save out of that, because we're going to use that net savings to pay for the switches and the APs and all those, plus another person.
Did we cover any?
Thanks for your work on this, John.
Thank you.
Ten point eleven, any public participation?
You can adjust for still participating.
I think they're already in bed.
Discussion of other business? All right. So eleven point one, exactly the exception to consider the appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official over event or yet process? Yeah. Motion. Say it again. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion.